Tell who's a hyzer.
Yeah. That's terrible.
Oh, how much is blown up? I thought you meant the.
No, 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 yeah. Look at my library. The whole screen.
So you need a bigger computer. Is there ever gets.
I better do this or someone's gonna call me.
Yes.
Yes, might be me too.
All right, forgotten.
No, I had, I have. Just.
Thank you. I don't know if I said thank you.
I haven't seen.
I don't know.
Good morning, Gene. How you doing? Do you guys get my train?
I come home. I got less than fifteen times. At the rodeo about a, about an hour before the rodeo, two hours before the Saturday, it's probably a half mile.
They got an inch and a half. I mean, yeah, a lot of everything, but it was just hilarious.
There was a couple of things, you know, that if it hadn't been that, I would say, hey, why are we over on this one? But those pale comparison. Okay. It's okay. We, we, we've got a lot of. Fine tune.
Okay, we're slow, man. Our. Derek, are we? We're ready or?
Oh, I'll tell you. Um, so we'll check with. We're ready.
We ready to rock and roll?
Morning, Gary.
Morning. We. Ready? With Tommy. I'll go ahead and call this a. Order supervisors meeting to order. We want to welcome. Everyone, you know, a busy, busy week. We have graduations and advancements and wanna wish all those seniors. The best of luck in life and make good choices. Anyway, we appreciate the employees and what they do. And with that, I've asked Supervisor David Gomez to lead us in the pledge.
Join. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gomez. Uh, also. Phones, please, if you put them on, uh. Either turn them off or put them where they don't ring and I'm talking to myself. Also, um. We, we are, uh. Facebooking this meeting. YouTube, I'm scared. Yeah. There is a difference, is there? High tech redneck, right? Anyway, we're YouTube in this thing and, and, uh. YouTube, you'll be able to, to attend the meeting, but there won't be any inner reaction. You won't be able to, to call in and, and address the board. You have to be here in person and. If anyone would like to address the board that's here, uh, please fill out a, uh, form at the beginning of the meeting. And, uh, when it's on a particular agenda item and we will address that at the proper time. So with that, we'll go to one B called the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the board in call to the public? Sheriff.
Morning, Tim, Sunday here, Sheriff. There. We could hear you. Oh, okay. Anyway, a couple of things yesterday. Be a busy graduation. This is past Saturday. Are they graduating one student up there? It's good to see that one. They have one for their favorite motion, one for the high school dragon. Experience. History and pretty big. Pretty interesting. This is a big. I was prepared to can, uh, on this. Supposed to be brought up officially and part of this immediately discuss the new transition of IT. What you're asking as far as, uh, the IT budget things, the IT department. It's a bit of a, it's in the department. And having that discussion about really some of the true logistics, I'll answer a lot of questions. And I'd be great to hear from the others. They had thought about, so good to, uh, have us. I appreciate that. Uh, both of those brought up yesterday, um, in the meeting, this, uh, concept, and I know about a year ago when there was a IT violation. It's conducted by this. And it, you know, I think a lot of details, at least, uh, but hopefully we know that there was some structural components we needed to change. One of the things I brought up yesterday was being addressed that structural component of applications. We still have some serious concern with, uh, Arizona State Department of Safety seizures. Um, perhaps, yeah, excuse me, all of it, but we have to do a little, a little registration, those accident by people on the streets, things like that. Um, I've just had another conversation recently, uh, that, uh, still not in compliance because of transition. We need to try to do this stress somehow, so I appreciate the discussion that I know yesterday with Mr. Paul May. Talked about I have technical stuff that we don't all understand about the difference on treaty versus it's a nine breakings on treaty by the case of the, the share talk. County, um, basically to happen. I, I do have, there's a little bit of concern recently with the, uh, decision of the. Website. The name. Um, people are just making sure two things. One, it's not gonna take you the time that is dedicated to county to get the, uh, take care of the needs. That will, especially this big project, if my understanding was that. Well, I appreciate, uh, this, um, so far, Mr. Mo over here. Um, he's coming by my office regularly. I appreciate that. I'm, uh, need, need help out. So very appreciate Ken wanting to say that. I think I have one before. Um, one of the things I brought, wanted to bring your attention is probably pretty dedicated about ensuring that being prevented. And I know you did a good job with that. For instance, like chips of the project. Whatever maybe you did, I always look at, are there other, um. You look at, you know, three goals and things like that. I don't know. Might as well the one option. So three options on the table right now. Using their only one option, there needs to be a few wide. Um, you know, going back to this, uh, new email, or not email, but new domain, website and county. Um, you know, this way it got brought up. I didn't see that there were any other options out there. I see it as the option of, or any other option whatsoever. I appreciate your good abilities and if you're asking questions, uh, very prudent questions. About, you know, what are the companies that are out there that are being used? What did those, you know, those things were not presented initially and then they ask questions. Right. Okay. Appreciate it. I never heard of response other than, yeah, they do some of the diverse cities. Specific companies or specific businesses or governments or anything that you can go look. I don't know if you can see that, but maybe yet. Um, if you have, I'd like to plus that, so I can look at it myself and kind of get to see some of that. The only one I do know for sure, I looked up and I don't know if you have, I know you can't answer my question, but I'm gonna ask, but in the anyways, I've been in one of you three. Look at this website. I know, Mr. Chairman, you tend to soapbox, stand clap last time and you discussed it, um, two weeks ago. You talked about, you know, make sure it's easy to use and this and that, and you know, and almost had to think about that music a hundred percent. You, you hit that little soapbox speech, I can easily say a hundred percent. Um, I used to know, I've been able to actually look at that. Important question that you cannot answer that, but if you haven't, and what do you do so? Um, I did, and, um, I'm not gonna sit here and, you know, talk bad about anything. I said, I'm just gonna say, are we gonna look at it and see what it is that you're. That you're, uh, putting your money and what you're investing in, say, this is what we're looking at, getting, um, look at our current website, this website, and if you can. There are options that were, um, available to say, yes, they, this has, Mr. Plummy has done, uh, websites from other places. I'll get that listed as well. That's your part of the true banking process. You come along to the, the great job that I know. And if it's a particular situation, I didn't see that, um, but I'd say, please look at it and check it out in future opportunities. Thanks for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the, uh. Board in call to the public? Well, seeing none, uh, we'll now go to agenda item two. Uh, the, the board of supervisor will convene as the board of directors of the Green County Public Health Service and, and will reconvene as the board supervisor. Follow consideration these items, A consent agenda.
So move that we approve the consent agenda is posted. I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will now go to agenda item three. Uh, we are convened as the board supervisors and the board supervisor will convene as the board of. Directors of the Green County Flood and Control District, and after the order of business, we'll reconvene as the board of supervisors. A consent agenda.
So move that we approve the consent agenda is posted. I'll second.
Here we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We are now convened as the, uh, order supervisors and we will go to agenda item four. Mr. Heinz, Public Works Manager, Fleet Facilities. Good morning.
Morning, morning. I'm Big Manager. We had gone out for bid for a, uh, four by four pickup. We got one bid back on that from Kempton's. Uh, so my recommendation would be go to Kempton's for that vehicle.
Okay, uh, I just, and, and I called you yesterday on that. Would you explain the bids, best said? Two hundred amps and, and we're getting a vehicle with a hundred and seventy amp.
Right. There's two, two items on the bid that was, uh, written on from Kempton's. Two items that I didn't take off. Uh, one was for buckets easy to front, which is not a big deal. And the other was for a two hundred amp alternator, which we usually get on PBB vehicles. But my understanding is this one's not gonna have lights and sirens and everything, so it's a hundred and seventy amp would be sufficient.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? If not, a motion would be in order.
I so moved that we approved to award the bid for the one half ton four by four pickup. For the sheriff's office, Kempton Chevrolet.
I'll second that.
Here we have motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Tony. We now go to agenda item five, uh. County and state budget and legislative issue.
Mr. Repair. Keep this very brief at this point and cover most of it in our budget work session. Um, long and short, as the, as we know, the, the state did adopt a budget. Um, we're finding, uh, our, our affiliates of Greensboro and finding things that, um, pertain to counties generally also to, uh. County, Green County entities within Green County. Uh, one thing we tried to get done last year to help Duncan schools and blue schools was to free up some excess equalization money. Uh, hats off to Brian Bowling. Uh, he began asking about it. We spent some time, uh, getting him up to speed on it, but he did the heavy lifting. He contacted Senator Gowan. They were able to get that in literally the morning they adopted, uh, the budget later that afternoon. He was getting figures over to them, and so that was approved of the budget. So that money that's been sitting there waiting to, for permission to spend has been free. And so, uh, while that doesn't affect county entity, it certainly affects. Our schools and, um, and, and so appreciated his effort. I, I, uh. Happened to run into his mother on Sunday and told her that her son's now lobbyist. I'm not sure she's happy about that. But, uh, other than that, I'll cover other, uh, budgeting issues, uh, in our next session.
Okay, and part of that went to the blue schools.
Yes, blue and done. Yes.
Okay. Uh. Next, we'll go to. B calendar events. Bianca.
Um, today, twenty third, our last board meeting of this month, um, we have. Our regular board meeting, sorry. And then we do have a budget meeting on the very first Wednesday. Small counties tomorrow, um, and ECO also tomorrow. CSA Board of Directors on the twenty fifth, and then we have promotions, um, Rancy Duncan, and then. On the twenty fifth and high school, uh, high schools, Rancy Duncan, and then the blue on Saturday. Um, our offices are closed Memorial Day on Monday, the twenty ninth. Going into June. Uh, our two board meetings, June sixth and, um, June twentieth. We have another budget work session, um. June fourteenth at three. Um, county managers on the night. With on the twenty first, junior rodeo on the twenty fourth. And then another budget meeting, um, on the twenty eighth at three. Um, going into July. We are closed on Tuesday. July fourth, so our meeting that week will be July sixth. And then our second board meeting on the twenty fifth. Um, junior rodeo on the fifteenth and the twenty ninth. And then the Naco Annual Conference in Texas is from the twenty first through the twenty fourth. No county managers or CSA. I have this.
Does, does anybody have anything they need to add?
Not add clarification on May thirty first, that budget meeting is at at three P M. as well.
Yes, I will be off, off regular ones. We scheduled at three.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for you, go to the consent agenda on item E. It says, uh, T. Brashir's Tech Two Facilities. That's actually Tech Two for roads, all in the public works department, but he will be a roads. Uh, employee as opposed to facilities employee.
Yeah, I wondered about that. Okay, does anyone have anything else they'd like to add to the calendar? Okay, thank you very, very much. Uh, we will now go to agenda item six consent agenda.
I moved that we approve the consent agenda is listed with the correction of item six E. Um, he brushers Tech Two to say roads rather than facilities.
Have a second?
I second that motion.
Here we have a motion in a second. Is a. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. We'll now go to agenda item seven. Minister Gomez.
You know, I, I was gonna mention something on call to the public, and, uh, so this is a good time to go ahead and mention it here. I just want to give kudos to the road department for the chips sitting out in. My neck of the woods, uh, they're doing an excellent job, including all the other folks that aren't from the road crew that are helping out. Uh. Like I said, they're doing a great job and kudos to them. Uh, one other thing is, I was headed to a meeting in Safford on Thursday and Friday of this past week and. Uh, Thursday morning. Got in the vehicle to take off and I had fourteen pounds of air in the rear. Uh, driver's side decided to pull into the three way because it didn't alert me till I was on the highway and pull into the three way. And with the chip ceiling going on, there was only one gentleman there. And, uh, I hit the jackpot when I got there and I told him, this was, this was about three minutes after nine o'clock and I told him, you know what? I said, can you put some air in my tire and I can get separate? I got a meeting at ten. And, uh. And then I'll check it out afterwards at, at, at a service station possibly. And, uh, he says, oh, no, 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 no. He says, pull it in here. He said, I gotta check it all out. He says, uh. I'm gonna pour some water on it and see if you got something in that tire, because he says, I don't want you to be out in the highway. With, with the situation that you're in. And I said, okay, fine. And I said, he said, I'll get you out of here in no time. And then so as he went to go grab the air shut, check the air on it, it's, but, uh. I, I started looking at the tire and there's a nail sticking out of it. So I said, well, here's the nail. And he says, okay, now let's finish pulling it in. He says, I'm gonna pull it. I'm gonna fix it. And you'll be out of here in fifteen minutes. Oh, and behold, I was out of there in fifteen minutes with a tire fixed. He told me, stay right here. I'm gonna check the air on the rest of the other tires, he says, and then you can be on your way. I was back on the highway at nine seventeen and I'm talking about that was serviced at its best. And this gentleman's name was Treadway. I just wanted to pass that out and I tell you what, that was, that was something else. I was. Here lately, I've been. Having conversations with folks that about our customer service. Everywhere. It's not the same that it used to be and, uh. That right there just made me eat my words, man, when this guy did what he did. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Kudos to Mr. Treadway. So that's it. That's what I, I got.
Good.
Ron? No, nothing for me this time. I was stooping off the last.
Well, uh. One thing I have with the legislature, uh, you know, they took a, a little break. Uh, we're still have things to worry about. They didn't, uh. Signee die. Uh, the budget is done. The governor, governor signed it. Uh. And, and I, I was very pleased Senator Gowan called me right after, uh. And said that, 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 uh. Equalization money was in the budget. He put it in a verb and it passed and. And he was really, as he should be, and, and yes, for Brian and, and. Uh, Mr. Bowling, excuse me, went over there and I know him and, and the superintendent of schools for Duncan went there and. And talked to him and we've been trying to get that done for quite some time, uh. And it just wasn't, didn't seem to like it was a priority, but, uh, Mr. Senator Gowan got it done for us and. We really appreciate that. I, I think, uh. All schools, uh. Will use that in, in a very positive manner. Also, I went to the Western Interstate Region. We did elect a, a new second vice president. Uh, John Peters from Cal- uh, California. Uh, there was three, uh, people running for second vice president. Uh, and Mr. Peters, uh, won the election. It seems like, uh. I wish. I went there hoping that I could come back and have a report on, on the Center for Public Lands. Where's that sits? I can tell you that Arizona is ahead of the pack. We have about. Well, well over eighty percent, probably eighty-five percent. Uh, we have, uh, thirteen of the, uh, fifteen counties that have committed. And, uh. So I'm very proud that, that that is going well for Arizona. I, uh, talked to a lot of other supervisors and commissioners. I just don't think they got on to it. It's quick. And, uh. I think the Center for Public Lands can, has the possibility to do a lot of good for, for the whole West. And, uh, I'm, I'm pleased that, that Arizona is, is committed to that. Other than that, uh. You know. The West is still burning. I wish sometimes that. We could have a paradigm shift and not have just words, because I, I really think if we got industry involved in the forest. Uh. It create jobs and it, it would. Uh. Help. Reduce the, the fuel load that we have. Other than that, I, I really don't have anything else to add and, and, uh. We'll now. Derek, do you need a little time before we go into budget work session or?
No, I'm ready when you are.
I'm ready.
Okay, well, we'll go to agenda item eight now. We'll go into a budget work session and. Uh, before I really appreciate. Uh, all the work that's. Been going on. I know Renee, I go in there and his computer smoking sometimes because. Uh, and Austin and Derek and Bianca, I, I really appreciate. I hope you realize that the board appreciates all the effort. That goes into, to putting a budget because. And, uh, and all the department heads and, and the elected officials. Uh. They know how complicated it is and, and we appreciate all of those that are doing their part to help. Uh, us with the budget. So with that, uh, Mr. Repair, I'll turn the time over to you.
Very good. Thank you. What you're gonna see is, is, uh, our first rough outline of it. Um. You will recognize, uh. Some of the sheets. We're gonna begin with, uh, what they call schedule A. Um. I always highlight this down in the left hand corner because that is. Where we've got to be balanced. That's gotta be to the dollar. Um, and you can see we're about five, just a little under five million or a little over five million dollars out of budget. Um. But. There's some reasons for that, that, that we'll talk about. Um. One of the moving parts that, that the sheriff mentioned is that we are moving to a different way of. Parsing out our budget and how we purchase, uh, what we would call. Regular or routine IT things. Um, computers need to be, uh, there's a lifespan, so as they come up. We're gonna change how we do that and build it out to each of the departments. Um, that will give each of them some, you know. Some more control. They'll also be responsible for ordering and so forth, but that will require some budget shifting internally. From what was IT to now, um, what would be. Some of it parsed out to the various, uh, departments and, and offices. That won't be all of it. There will still be some stuff, um. That affects the entire county, things like servers, networking devices. Um, other things that affect the entire county would still stay in the IT budget. But if a program, for example, is a specific to an office, assessor, county attorney, whatever, that will then be shifted their budget. Um. The other thing I wanted to focus on early on is our revenue outlook. And I, I'm a little concerned about it. Um, let me start by a shifting over here to schedule B. One of the things concerns me and I, I've been looking and looking, looking, let me, let me blow this up so it's a bit easier to see.
You can see this.
Yeah, well. Some people have all the luck, great eyesight.
Yes.
So, um, I, and I put in attentive figures. Usually by the end of March, early April, we get numbers from the Property Tax Oversight Commission, PTOC or PTOC. Um, that, that give us our maximum, uh, tax rate, our maximum or our, uh, uh, assessed value. And of course, as, as this county knows probably better than any. There's an inverse relationship between the tax levy and the tax rate based on the assessed value. And so we've not gotten that. And so as I went looking for it, I went through my junk folders. I went through everything I could find. I actually emailed the person who sent it to me, uh, last year and, and I got an email back saying they've retired. And that email doesn't go anywhere anymore. So I sent a, an email last night, uh, saying, hey, where, where's our numbers? And so I worked these, these aren't gonna be exact. It's likely to be a little bit changed, but essentially I worked the formula backwards. And so we're looking at a levy of about three, three point six, almost three point seven million dollars on the primary property tax levy. Um. I'm gonna shift down here to the bottom here. The maximum tax rate for our two special districts. The Public Health Services District and the Flood and Control District are capped at twenty five cents. And so, um, we would likely max out on that. You recall the last two years, we were always at twenty five cents forever and ever, never, never. In the last two years, the assessed value being as high as it was, we actually dipped below that, that maximum the last two years. I think we'll be back at the maximum. Um. Over here, uh, this is actually, let me correct that real quick. That's seventy-two fifty-nine. So you'll see on the primary property tax levy, the rate will go up a little bit. Um. We had a friendly banter back and forth, uh, at our last county managers meeting, uh, Steve Peru, who's native of the area. Who's the manager in Coconino County was bragging the, the lowest. Property tax rate. I said, not so fast. Let's count them all together and we come in way below everybody. Um, but they do have the lowest primary property tax rate, Coconino does. But nevertheless, um, some of these numbers are going to change a little bit, but we're, we're in the ballpark. So the revenue there, um. And, and unlike most counties, we collect. North of ninety-six, ninety-seven percent. We, we. Primary because we have a, a large individual pack taxpayer, um, we don't worry about collection rates. Um, there's always some that, that drag in, but not much. Um, there's always some that that drag in, but not much. Most of it is is paid on time. Um. This is the part that I'm I'm primarily concerned about. So these are our revenue numbers from last year. Let me blow this up a little bit more again. So our our these four numbers account for. The majority of our general fund revenue, not all of it, but a majority of it. And you'll see that that uh and we've been hearing this from CSA for several months now that the vehicle license tax, also known as the auto lieu tax. Um, has been going down. The state. Funds itself primarily on income tax and corporate income tax in particular has gone through the roof. Uh, individual income tax has, even with the cutting rates, has still climbed. And um, and so the state often will talk about revenues being on the positive and they are. We don't get a a segment of income tax that goes to the to the uh cities and and primarily the state. We do get a cut of the vehicle license tax, but as you can see. Their projection, we received these a couple of weeks ago, their projections will be almost two hundred thousand dollars down on that line item alone. Um, on the half set sales tax. Um. And I'm gonna switch to another. Half cent and shared sales tax of the areas where I've got some concern. So let me pull that up.
Derek, is the is the cut on the vehi- uh vehicle license tax, is that because they did away? They they were charging a a set fee uh for vehicle. Uh, and I think that went away. Is that the primary reason for it? Cause that's that's almost half.
That that's that's gonna explain the the structural change. There's also been, and there's some lag in it, but but. There's some concern that there's not as many new cars in particular being sold. Um, in fact, I read a report just last week. That cars in the United States right now are the oldest on average that they've ever been since they've been tracking it since the forties or fifties. The average car on the road in America today is twelve and a half years old. People are simply not buying them. The uncertainty about the economy, high interest rates, manufacturers are are moving away from more economy type vehicles in favor of SUVs. And trucks and large vehicles that that are in demand. But those prices that shot up during the chip shortage during the pandemic have not come back down. They they haven't even completely leveled off. And so so you're seeing um people fixing cars, whereas, you know, maybe two, three years ago, a a five thousand seventy-five hundred dollar repair. Would say, hey, I just go get a new one. Now you're saying we're gonna put that money into the old car and keep it on the road for a few more years. And so there there are several factors. Um, with that line item in particular, one of the the concerns is that because. It's not a major revenue source for the state, it's seldom talked about. Um, it portion that does go to the state, but relative to corporate and and individual income tax, it's it's a a very thin line item. And so it it tends not to get much discussion. Frankly, even our own budgets, it's not as significant as some of the others. Our half set and shared sales tax is where my concerns are. So um, let me direct your attention first to that red number in the yellow column. So the yellow column is what I always keep for the current year's receipts month by month. We received ten out of twelve months of shared sales tax revenue for fiscal year twenty-three. You'll see that big ugly red negative number, eight hundred and thirteen. You recall um late last summer, we were aware there was a a change in. The way they taxed electricity as it pertains to mining operations. Um, at last year's CSA conference, uh representatives from FMI had gone around to every one of the fifteen counties and said, look. We're gonna make you whole on this. Um, others, other uh corporations that also got this break did not do that. And and that's simply uh a tip of the hat to our corporate citizen here in the county. But they went to every county and said, we're gonna make you whole on that. And they did. And so everybody got a a check. Our check, the Green County, was one point three million. And so as you look at that negative eight hundred and thirteen, if you could sort of pencil in about um five hundred thousand dollars is what it is. Down here at the bottom, I've actually adjusted for that. And this six million two hundred and fifty-three thousand. That accounts for the one point three that we receive from FMI. So that would bring this number from a red eight thirteen up up into the positive by about uh five hundred thousand. Here's the problem. So in this column here, I keep track of the current year's receipts versus a running three-year average. The running three-year average is in the green column. And you'll notice that for most months in this year, we are below. Now, it's not that much. It's it's roughly single digits. And we've accounted for this two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar dip. That was the made up by the company. But as you go over here in this year over year, every single month except um. March, now I guess every single month except February, we're negative year over year. Um, we are. Somewhat ahead of projections. Well, actually, we're right at projections. We projected six point five million for sales tax revenue. Right now, this this yellow number down in the bottom right corner. Um, that represents essentially taking the yellow column, averaging those months. And then um spreading over twelve year, twelve month period. It does include this dip. So this five point nine is actually low. Our projection for the year was six point five. We should probably hit that this year. But I want you to notice the year before, we had projected, I think it was seven uh. Yeah, we we projected in our budget right right under seven million for revenue and we collected nine. Actually, we were at six million. We were we're just about three million over projections a year ago. This year, it's it has slowed down. It has tapered off and and those revenues are are larger than they've been. Over the three-year average, but they're not rising like they were last year. So that that single light item is our our single largest contributor to our revenue uh picture. And and that that series of red numbers concerns me. And you'll you'll see those last two entries. Here, the uh seventeen eighty-two and the twenty-three eighty-six are are significant year over year. Um, twenty, nearly twenty-five percent down from last year's numbers. Um, on the county half set sales tax, um, the numbers are not as bleak. Although you'll see in this in this last month of April, we are off on both the three-year average as well as year over year. The trouble is that this is not our, is not the largest revenue stream we've got, is the shared sales tax from the state. There's a couple of factors that affect the shared sales tax that are out of our control, but also causes us to look outside of Arizona. Um, as to the explanation. So part of the the shared sales tax formula in Green Lake County is based on assessed value. And then the distribution of the severance tax or the collection of the severance tax is affected by the price of copper and the cost of production. So we're obviously watching the world market and copper has held pretty well. The trouble with that is that the cost of production goes up with inflation. So we're seeing rise in wages. We're seeing ri- rise in fuel and and anybody who's, you know, spends ten minutes downtown will see. A dozen trucks go by with with diesel in it. So. And 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 that's some of our black box formula. We know what's in the formula. We are not allowed to know the exact numbers. So even though copper may hold steady, if the cost of production rises. Our share of the shared sales, shared sales tax stream will diminish. And so as inflation, inflation is affecting all of our personal pocketbooks, it's affecting the county's pocketbook. And it's affecting the bottom line on this revenue stream. Our half cent sales tax is doing well. If I don't go back and and switch uh screens here, I don't know if there's a switch. Now I'll need to stop sharing. Um. As I come back up here, you'll notice I've got penciled in nine hundred thousand dollars. Our revenue for the current year will end up being around one and a half million. So why is that six hundred thousand dollars less? That's our best estimate on the ongoing um deficit from the electricity change. On our, the effect on its, on our half set sales tech. It's about fifty thousand dollars a month. It can be a little more, a little bit less, but since that's no longer taxed. Um, I've estimated at least for this initial trial balance. Um, that will be down about six hundred thousand dollars on that revenue stream. So while it's not our largest, that's a significant hit uh to our revenue stream. Um, pilt, even pilt is down a little bit. And when we receive these, um. We get the number from CSA, they get it from the uh Congressional Budget Office. Um, and that number, that projection. Has held pretty doggone close every year. Um, usually by this time, they are um. Budgeting, um, right now, as you're aware, they're not budgeting, they're squabbling over the debt ceiling. Um, which which may have some effect on us as well. One of the things that have been on the table, I haven't heard about it the last week, but it was certainly there earlier, was it uh the House Republicans. In order to strike a deal on the debt ceiling, wanted to claw back some of the unspent ARPA funds. It was unclear whether that's just the original ARPA funds of which we received, uh, you know, one point eight million. Or whether that was the uh local uh local city and tribe, Renee, what is it? L? Yes, it's it's a acronym that stands for local, local and count and tribal um funds. We've been calling it the pill substitute for ARPA. Our share of that was was uh just a hair under three million dollars. And so. Um, there's some urgency to get our projects off the ground and spin. Um. That's it. That's it. Thank you. LATCF. So.
Pretty good.
Um, but but that's one of those things is looming, you know, in the background. So as we. As we consider how to utilize that fund, now fortunately, we have prioritized capital projects. Um, that are one-off projects. And and while they're important to us. If they didn't happen, we're not laying somebody off because the funds got flawed back. We would simply delay um some of the projects that we had considered. Um, that's not to diminish their importance. We went through a lengthy process to to decide where to allocate that money. Um, but it's something to keep in the back of our mind. So revenue streams on these these four big ticket items, five big ticket items, really the link with taxes is is relatively small. Um, is we're, we're about eight hundred thousand dollars off from from last year's revenues.
So so I I guess the question that I would have. Is. With 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 the shared sales tax. Is that, is is the slope gonna be continued to go downward? Or is it gonna, is it gonna level out? Because that will affect how we need to set our budget this year.
I can only say, Mr. Chairman, that if I knew the answer to that question, I'd be in Vegas and not.
Uh, but but we still have to consider that.
We we absolutely do. And and I don't mean to make light of that, but so so as I come back to the shared sales tax um sheet here.
I just. It's like asking what the price of copper is gonna be.
Still.
Just throw the dice.
So.
But no, I agree, but but that has to be.
So what what we see and and the red numbers are concerning. But what they tell is a story of leveling, not necessarily dropping. So what we're seeing is year over year, they are lower than they were in the last fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two. But if you'll notice, these figures month to month, they're holding fairly steady. Um, and that's why taking this average of these ten months, I think is a good, good prognosis for the next two months. We have been hearing, you you heard me say this last year, and I think maybe the year before, that there are recession worries. There are economy slowing worries. We worry more about the world economy than we do about the Arizona economy. Um, most policy decisions about recessions are made with the the sort of the Maricopa bubble. And they they're more concerned about Arizona's slowing economy as opposed to a international economy. For us, if China stops making things, we stop, you know, copper doesn't get sold as much. And so that's where we keep an eye on it. Um.
There, those figures, so even though they're stable or stabilizing, you say. It's a double-edged sword. It's costing us, labor's costing us more, materials costing us more. So even though those figures. W- we, we do a lot less with the same amount of money because everything's gone out.
And and Mr. Chairman, you just described the 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 challenge we're running into this budget. And that is the necessary rise in some costs, including the labor component, the the materials component, those are all rising. Um, revenues, I think, will hold steady, but they're not rising as well. Um, that is typical, both in the in the micro economy here, but also the macro economy of. The prelude to a recessionary period. You got rising costs, you've got, you've got um essentially stabilizing or destabilizing downward. Um, you know, the revenue side of any economy. And so, yes, that's, and and we're gonna have a discussion with you um. Down the agenda a little bit about um some proposals for wages. At our last county management meeting, let's go back a a month ago, two months ago even. We did a roundtable and said, where's everybody at looking for wages? And and four to five was the most common. There were some counties where in the seven, eight percent. They were talking about rising wages. Um, many of them are doing like a two or three percent at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then in January, they're doing one or two or three percent uh in merit increases. We haven't used that merit type of uh structure for a while. Um, but at this last meeting, a lot of those numbers are backing off. So whereas the the totals may be five, six, seven percent with with both components. Or and and some of them do it differently. Some some do half now, half later. Um. But with those components, most everybody's numbers have backed off. So there are some counties that are talking about two and three percent. Or five percent with with, you know, three now and two later. But almost everybody except, I think, Yavapai, Yavapai already adopted a budget and they were in the seven, eight percent range. Um. Again, some of those things become local. Uh, but but for the first time in my memory. Our discussion has really kind of changed. And and this is not true, because we've had, we've had lean years before. But whereas the driving factor in our budgets for so many years has been the expenditure side and the expense limitation. You can't, you could have a a billion-dollar expenditure limitation, but if you don't have the money to pay more bills, you still can't buy. Um, and so so our our discussion now will shift more to a revenue discussion as opposed to an expenditure discussion. But Mr. Chairman, you you've hit the the nail on the head. And so as we go through here, uh, there are some costs that we can control better. There are other costs that that are are gonna rise. Fuel is gonna continue to rise. Um, I I don't see us getting in the in the two-something fuel range for some time. Um. Diesel fuel, uh, which is a primary component of our roads and landfill. Um, it's not showing any signs of of drifting back down. Um, on either the retail or the wholesale side. And so some of those costs, you know, we've still gotta bury our bury our garbage every day. We still have to to run our equipment on roads. Um, we all get excited when it starts to rain. Everybody except, you know, utility linemen and roadspeople. Because they know they'll be out in it fixing. Last year was a rough year for our roads department in terms of the monsoon. It seemed like every every day they were fixing something and that and I had to undo the fix. Um. So so you're right. And and that's why all those red numbers, as I as I, you know, got to look into this, um. What I actually did last night was they were all negatives. I just turned them red so it's easier to see and and all of a sudden it it became a less pretty picture. Um. Let me talk about a couple of other uh things back on our. Budget worksheets. Much of this is is fairly routine. Um, I wanted to mention the state. Out-of-county tuition subsidy. So. Last year, we were successful in changing the formula. That that alone was almost a million dollar switch in our budget. Savings. That was money back in our budget. Now, last year, we budgeted for it as though we were gonna pay it. Because they didn't settle the budget till June twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, right, the very, very, very end. And so we didn't know. Um, what that would be, so we budgeted for it. This year, the formula is untouched. We we had folks monitoring us that for us the entire session. Fortunately, nobody was interested and it it just, nobody ever mentioned it. So the form. Fortunately, nobody was interested and it, it just, nobody ever mentioned it. So the formula is untouched. But interestingly, last year, not at our request, they maintained the subsidy. So we were supposed to have paid about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We didn't have to because the state subsidized that. Um, again, we've been conspicuously quiet. We just said, you know what? We addressed our issue, we'll be quiet. In the budget talks again this year, this showed up again. And so again, this year, I think it's around three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand. But the state has subsidized that again. So that roughly million dollar savings, we will realize again. Not just seven hundred thousand by the formula change, but the entire chunk. Um. The chairman and I have discussed that, that when all the dust has settled sometime in the late summer or fall, we would then talk with J O B C and make sure that they understand. This was not something we, we requested. Um. We have on purpose kept our head low on this. Um. But, but we want. For our own, uh, you know, organizational integrity, we want to make sure they understand this was not something we asked for. And, and we're not gonna squeal if, if it goes away next year.
They're gonna look at you like.
I don't. Why you will. It, it actually feels like when you go to the convenience store and, and you give them a dollar for your soda and they give you the wrong change back. It's simple to say, you know what? You gave me fifteen cents too much. Here's your fifteen cents back. And it feels like that. If on the other hand, they insist on giving us fifteen cents every year for the next ten. And just keep paying that. We will have made it clear, we didn't ask, thank you very much. But please understand, we're not, we're not greedy and, and grubby. So. But nevertheless, that, that will be a boon to our budget. Um, we do have the second half, the, uh. L A T C F funds that we just, you know, finally sorted out the acronym on. Um, we under budgeted that last year. So this, this one point four is actually incorrect. We budgeted, um. Seven twenty-five for that. But we'll, so we'll have some leftover from, from the current fiscal year and then we'll get the second allotment of one point four. That money comes into play as we're gonna talk a little bit later about P S P R S payoffs. What we want to do with that. We discussed that. The board gave instruction to get closer to the end of the year to see whether there might be some money. Um, we've got a one point two five million already budgeted that we can go directly to that payoff. The remaining roughly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I started looking around the budget last night, see where, where it can be found. I'll discuss that a little bit later. Um, but if we, if we, even if we did not pay it all the way off. This year, that second L A T C F distribution would give us sufficient to, to pay it off early in the next fiscal year. Um, the rest of these are, are fairly routine and pretty small. Um, and of course. You know, this, this is another big line item that, uh, that affects our, our budget balance. Um. But I want, I wanted to be clear about, about my concerns about revenue. And, and it, it really is. We've seen such skyrocketing, uh, high. So for example. Last year, the estimate that we got from, from A D O R and. And Kate told me this back when I was the county attorney. She told me when I came back to work, she says, never trust A D O R's numbers. They give you an estimate and they're always wrong. Um, the year we collected nine million, they had estimated we would get like six million. And I think we budgeted a little over six million. Um. This year, they predicted we'd get seven million. We're probably not gonna quite make seven million. Um, for fiscal year twenty-four, they're predicting six point one million. I, I think that's probably gonna be as close as they've been in a while. Um, but I'll, I'll look at some other things, uh, talk to other folks and see if we can get a better idea on that. Um. All right, covered shared sales tax. Phil, perfect. Okay, we got that, that covered. Um. I'm gonna turn the next part of the meeting over to Austin. Um. When we had our very first budget discussion, we talked about a target of five percent and then some targeted market adjustments. Um, Austin's done a pretty comprehensive review of, of groups and. And has done some market analysis. Now, the market is, is. Different depending on what position you're talking about. I'm gonna, I'm gonna embarrass Bianca and Richard. I don't know what happened, but we were at a small county's forum a couple of, it was about a month ago. And, and my counterpart in Hila County, um. Was trying to pick off our elections director and clerk of the board. Uh. He was, he was kind of joking about it, but he was serious too. And, and he highlighted for us, um, they've lost their clerk of the board. And, and he highlighted that, you know, protecting our, our. Skilled people who, who have particular skills. Is gonna become an issue. Mojave County right now cannot find engineers. They can't find attorneys. Um, part of that is the rural nature of some of the outer counties. Um, but, but they're paying better than most counties and, and they're losing some of their key people. So I asked Austin to do a comprehensive look, say, where are the areas where we're low? Um, given the revenue picture I've just painted, it's something we want to think about and fine tune the budget before we make a final decision. But with that, I'm gonna turn over to Austin to talk about his, his studies on that.
Derek, before we, we do that, on that, and I, I haven't seen the whole thing. You know, the, the ARPA funds that we got and, and we went through that, uh, different projects. And how much of that money have we spent? I, I'm on those projects because. You know, and, and we talked about, uh, well, some of that going to, to the Tyler farm and this, that, the other and. Are we progressing well on those projects? Or is that money just sitting there not really? And being eaten away by inflation?
Um, it's a multifaceted question. I, I would give Renee the, the table to talk about how much we've actually spent. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk a little bit. Um, Tony, Tony doesn't know, I'm gonna call him on the carpet, but we'll talk a little bit about some of the projects and, and some of the delays we've seen. Uh, but we can give you a full answer on that.
It's, it's.
Just the projects that I started here. Um, I just.
Okay. Okay, I, cuz.
That's total, Renee.
So, a- and that's really a, a small, yeah, and.
It is.
We need to get something going. I don't know. That's the way I feel.
I don't understand.
Is, isn't the deadline the end of twenty twenty-four?
Twenty-six. We have to commit it by twenty-four and. And, and Green County being as small as we are and the small distribution we got. We have committed it to revenue replacement. And, and as such, we can then use it, uh. For other general fund projects, but, but our commitment is to revenue replacement. And in our reports, we make that clear. Um. But, but let me describe an interesting thing that's happened with some of our projects. Um. The renovation of the kitchens in the paramutual building. Great project and we've been, we've been going along on it so, you know, a little bit as we can. But as we've talked about several times, we don't have the, the deal sheet prisoner support we've had. And how long have they been gone, Tony?
About a year.
About a year. And so as we had four or five extra, you know, people down there to, to help. Uh, there were times that, that Tim was down there trying to frame walls and stuff by himself. Which can be done, but it takes a whole lot longer. Uh, we've recently hired, uh, an, an individual at, at, uh. Supervisor Gomez, he became aware and said, hey, you should apply and, and, uh, and, and things have picked up. He's really been a great asset. But one of the challenges we have is there's only so many bodies. And, and that, that makes it difficult to, to complete projects while we continue with our other. Uh, you know, cleaning and maintaining our fields and whatever else we do. So, um, it, it again becomes another manifestation of that. Rising cost of labor and the ability to get it done. We've talked about, and I think there are some projects where we're going to probably go out and see if we can get an outside contractor to get the job done for us. Um, that would probably increase the cost somewhat, but it'll reduce the time. And so, um, and unless you direct us to do otherwise.
Get it done. Yeah, get it done. And I, I just. Like you say, Congress is already beginning to, to waffle and it just, and I'll just use Whip for example. They, they, they appropriated one billion dollars. They took a hundred and thirty-nine million. And it's had been in there a year. They're already sucking it off for special projects that, that they have. And. I don't know, I.
Oh, static money gets swept.
Yeah. So anyway, and I do.
Okay, I could discuss that. Because we did, we went through a long process to prioritize the use of that money and, and. You know, some of it, and the best example is that the money was set aside for housing development. We knew that wasn't gonna get spent because we were trying to keep it as a whole to do the best that we could on that project. Um, other stuff, we've just gotta get it done. And, and, you know, the smaller projects that, that are out there, we've got some of them done. And they've been bought, paid for and completed. One, uh, I'm thinking of the audio visual system in the court courtroom, which is approved. It was a year, the quote was a year old and, and. They still said, you know, we don't have this component or that component. We'll, we'll come up when they get it. I don't know if it's done yet. Still not done. And so waiting on parts. Um. Other things, you know, we've been able to get done and implement, but, but your concern is not misplaced.
Okay.
And with that, Austin?
Thank you.
Right, so going through this, you know, Derek can kind of instruct me and look and say, what, what does it look like for our scales? What are we looking at? One of the things, um, as the sheriff mentioned about. Looking over those comp scale and getting a new one out, right? So I, I've spent a lot of time looking over this. Um, different pieces of that compensation. And, and like Derek said, kind of using different reference points, points based on the positions. Right? As much as I can, I try to stick to the small counties, right? Meaning that's us, La Paz, Santa Cruz, uh, Grand. Again, trying to get some of those that are, are more relative to really where we are, uh, typically. Eva, Santa Cruz, Grand, and, uh, specifically. Those are the ones that I'm trying to range off of, uh. Other things, uh, they gave them, I'm looking at our admin staff as well as. And our, uh. Operation staff, meaning our, uh, public works guys, um, for roads and for, for maintenance. I'm using some references.
Hey, Austin. Let go of your button real quick, see what happens.
Better this way?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. My bad. So with it, um, each one of these is a little bit different reference point on here. Uh, we went ahead and pulled the five percent against what payroll looks like now. Um, but going through here, when I was searching through these, one of the things that the sheriff had asked to look at was dispatch. Um, I went and pulled dispatch. Um, dispatch was probably maybe forty cents low, forty to sixty cents low on the range. When I pulled the four small counties. Um, but when I went and referenced detention, um, a lot of the other sheriff staff. They sit typically on the high side of the four county range. Um, and so when I looked at this in order to move to, to dispatch to kind of fit the same alignment with the rest of the sheriff's office, which is typically. On the high end of the smalls. Um, it put that grade up, I believe it was two dollars and forty cents. And move that grade, so that would be a shift and everybody over at two dollars and forty cents.
Um, and how many employees would that be at dispatch?
Let me, let me get you here. Make it easier. You can see what I'm talking about.
And that's, that's, that's not counting E R Es, correct?
Not counting E R Es.
This is just straight.
The wage.
Wage.
So if we look at dispatch. These are the numbers currently. This is with a five percent increase. If you see that, let's see, zoom in a little bit more. This is with the five percent increase. Um, that's the dollar amount of the five percent increase. Um, this is with the grade move. Um, this is that extra two dollars and forty cents that would kind of put them on par with where detention. Uh, the sheriff deputies are almost, almost everyone I looked at in the sheriff's department was on the high side of average of the smalls. Um, and so when you look at that, yeah, you can see the percentages here to what those were increased. So. That's the first one I looked at that when, and again, that would bring them relative to their peers in the sheriff's department.
Plus C R Es.
Yep. And so this is not include E R Es. This is just the salary figure, right? And that salary, you know, our benefits went up. That's pretty much a fixed cost. Um, but those FICA and those other things will have an added percentage. So.
Real quick, as he moves to the next discussion, that we've also. It is unusually late. We don't have some of our retirement rates yet. We have A S R S, we don't have P S P R S. And so we're, we're behind on some, we don't have workers' comp yet. Those numbers are usually here by now. Um, but, but we do not have those. Some of this will shift as we get those. Uh, other E R E, uh, rates from, from our sources.
All right. So the other big group we looked at is looking at public works. Public Works is a large group, right, of, of individuals there. Um. If, if we brought our public work operator twos to the average of the small counties, that puts them at twenty dollars an hour. Um, that's about a dollar fifty under Freeport employees, um, up the hill that are operator ones. Um, so we're still, again, which is, which is pretty normal for us. We're usually sitting a dollar or two lower than Freeport's prices. Um, right now, we're substantially lower than that. Um. That number, um, and I think, I think that number's a dollar thirty on the increase is what that wage bracket would shift over. So again, we're looking at the five percent, there's different rates here. Um, but the actual cost for that wage shift is that two thousand six eighty-three.
A- a- and, and that goes from tech, one, two and threes, uh.
That's a flat line, that's a flat. I, I pegged, I pegged one twenty-nine was a number that fits the best for twos. It's, if, if we really wanted to go into detail, they're probably from fluctuation to three to go higher. Uh, but I feel like one twenty-nine for twos, even with the threes, puts us in a pretty good range.
So, yeah, so we're looking at about twelve percent there.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's, you figure about twenty employees?
Yes.
And that's a, okay.
Um, the other ones, let's see here, admins is another group. Um, one of the things, you know, detention sergeant, that's another one in there. Um, that would be the same. Attached to the detention group. Um. Far as the admin goes. This is a, our admin cost right now, we're paying, our grade starts at seventeen oh eight. Um, Freeport's grade starts at twenty-two, the average of the smalls starts at twenty. Um, so if we went to the average of small, technically twenty-twelve would be average of the smalls, but if we went to twenty, this is the numbers that it would look like. So it's about a six thousand dollar grade increase to get up to twenty.
And that's twenty-one percent.
Now, we don't have a ton of admins, but there's, there's seven admins on there. Um, and this is all.
That's across the county.
Yeah. All right. So some of these in here are gonna be a little bit different. I just had them in here because I was working on them at the same time. Uh, one of them, uh, is the planning position and I, I read, I'll probably talk a little more about that later. Uh, but, you know, we, one of the ARPA projects that is done is we've got the new planning software. Um, if you ever go to do a permit now, it's all online. You can pay it point and pay. Um, so Hayden was. This is moving, um, Carolyn up to that assistant or that admin assistant. So. All right, bounce down.
No, I, I. You were mentioning about another planner, planner and stuff, who was mentioning about another planner. Have we ever thought of, uh? I mean, have you, have you spoke about maybe raising the permit fee? That's.
I really. It's still forty-five. I mean, really, it's, it's nothing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, not, you know, not to stir the pot or anything, but. You know, forty-five bucks. I mean, even if you doubles that, it's still a dongle of a deal. I mean, we should really think about.
I, I think what the, the biggest thing for us, David, when we look at it, is just the volume that we get. It, it doesn't really do much, right? I mean.
Well, yeah.
One trip to Phoenix is probably saving us what, what. You know, one trip to Phoenix is probably saving us what, what doubling the permit fee would be, if that makes sense, I mean. I know we've got more more permits in lately, but I bet we're probably still relatively small amount. Um, but it's something we could definitely look at to see.
Uh, we can do some projection that I don't, we're going to have it ready for this budget adoption, but we could do that, you know, even mid-year.
And it would help.
Yeah.
It even helps, right?
Well, yeah, you know, process the paperwork and or, you know, because you.
Maybe it'll pay for the.
Forty-five dollars on that, processing the paperwork and going to planning and zoning and all of that.
For sure, by the time, by the time we pay probably for fuel to go out and put signs, we're probably.
Yeah.
Going through forty-five bucks.
I thi- I think our friend from Yabba County told us that some of the permits, he's looking at eight, ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Or forty-five.
Yeah.
I'm not sure he believes us still.
I know, probably not.
But no, definitely worth the thought, at least to make it cover some of those costs that are going to be there, right?
I know it's small, but it's something, yeah.
All right, let me get this back up.
I think it was fifteen when I built my own. In eighty-one.
Um, so, let me see here. Yes. Okay. The other piece is looking at our public works manager, so this is looking at where they fall. Right, um, this one's kind of a hard one to peg a number to. Um, if if we peg it based on public works directors, they're way, way underpaid, right? I think that number came out at one thirteen. Um. That isn't really what they do, right? It's that they're kind of both assistant directors in that role, right, where they each have their their pieces of the puzzle. Um. So looking through this, it's tough, if we went down and we looked at like the crew lead level, those are usually around sixty. Um. If I go and I compare it against an F M I supervisor, their wages are pretty close, um, to where they sit, with the increase, they'll be pretty close. Um, and then if we did a senior supervisor, that's where this number is, this is a the ninety-eight and and looking through this, trying to determine what that is, right? Um. They have multiple leads and crews underneath them, which is more similar to supervisor, senior supervisor role. Um, they also deal with budgetary, um, I know when I worked at Freeport, senior supervisor didn't do a lot of budget, that was usually the superintendent level. Um, you know, thinking about from here, they do a lot of the budgetary constraints that you would have your director doing. Um, but within their own group, so they're not dealing with the whole thing, so. Looking at that, this, to me, when I was looking at references, looked like a close place to be, um, and then roundabout to that number, I think would be a good wage. One of the things looking at this is you guys know that, you know, Dave's looking at retiring. Um, going through and looking through those positions, trying to find people that are interested in there for the wage that we're paying is. Then not super productive, um, we've made a lot of calls out, a lot of people I used to work with up there and just. There's not a lot of interest for that, um, which is, is for me, is a little bit saying, well, where where do we sit, right? Um. So that's kind of where that one came from. Um, again, that one's kind of a hard one to peg, a really hard number too, I if I get pulling averages, there's not. Both groups don't necessarily run that way, or at least they don't use that as a benchmark, so. Right? So. Let's see here, uh. The CFO position for us, that's one we've discussed before, that's one that we made a move from eighty to eighty-seven, five. Um, we made that move, it got us closer, but it's not. Right now, pulling the references across one oh five is what that number looks like, if we're going to do the average of the smalls. Um, that's. Depending, again, if you put any kind of size to that, that number goes up, um, one of the other things is too, um, with this position. Being that it's such a. It's an employee market right now, even if you go look at Freeport positions right now, a senior accountant no longer requires a bachelor's degree. They're trying to get people in to fill those roles, so that that market is. Again, this is still under, I think, what senior accountant is up there by quite a bit, um, but for where we're sitting, that's the average of the lows.
Don't listen to that, Renee.
Average of the small, let me go it that way, the small county, not the lows, right? Um. The other piece here, let's see. Um. Going over this review, I told Derek, I don't need to be in this review, Derek said, we need to do all the reviews, again, same thing, if I'm pulling average of the lows, um, for the deputy position, that's what that one oh four is that number there. Then, uh, let's see, I think the last one I have on here is the elections. Um. Again, elections going through, um, I have it formatted weird and a thirty-two dollars an hour thing, um, instead of the annuals. Um, but this position, if we did the same thing and we pulled those low averages and we pull that number, we pull sixty-eight is where that number is. Um, based on those four smallest counties to pull the average for the elections director. Um, some of this, it depends on what we pull against, clerk of the board sometimes are paid higher, um, so that can kind of skew it that way, just depending. Um, if this, this is really more referenced on the election director side more than the clerk of the board side.
Let me come on that one too, the small counties. Um. I think every one of them, the clerk of the board wears two hats. In some cases, it's the manager and the clerk of the board, in some cases, the clerk of the board and elections director. Um. So that i- it's it's difficult to compare apples to apples because I think, um. Graham County, for example, their deputy clerk of the board. Her job description and day to day looks very much like Bianca's, she's also the elections director. Um, we know that recently, uh, a job posted in city of Safford for. Clerk of their town council and elections director, uh, it was in the eighty, eighty thousand dollar range, the starting wage, um. Don't listen to that either, Bianca, so. Um. And so, so. This one was was difficult to to really do the analysis because you you got. A little bit different in every community, Santa Cruz does do the same thing that we do, clerk of the board and elections director. Um, and I think one other county may do it that way.
Maybe Apache.
It may be Apache, but but, um. But. This was was not a small task to try and identify these groups where we seem to be under.
Would it make sense to change that from hourly to salary?
Yeah, we were, that was, that's part of the discussion, I just put it on hourly right now because technically Bianca's hourly. So, but you're right, as as going to that, salary does make a lot more sense and that's something we'll discuss, yeah.
Maybe you can modify that just to.
I like the twenty, two hundred fifty-three thousand percent increase.
Yeah, it's based on our.
I'm holding them up, so.
One, one, one of the. One of the pieces with this, and you know, some of me and Derek's discussion on this is. You know, and and Bianca's, that's again, something we have to discuss with her on this is as well, um. Is Bianca does have a fair amount of comp time, um, and so in order to process that out, we'd have to buy out comp time. Um, to to go to an exempt, right, because an exempt can't have comp time, so. But that's something as we go forward, she could probably burn some down by the end of the year, but.
Oh, whatever makes sense.
Yeah. But I I agree with you a hundred percent, exempt makes more sense for the.
And it would be a one-off, uh, on on the Biden, it it would be a one-time pay down and and go from there. Um. Anyway.
Yeah, so again, this is kind of a, just a a going through, trying to go through all the positions to see what it looks like, those are the positions that really had some major changes. Um. That, again, when we're looking at references across, whether that's across the counties or whether that's, and and I tried to say as much as we could to the counties. Um, again, and a lot of them made sense where we're, where I think we probably should be, right, we're paying a couple of dollars less than Freeport, which is, I feel like, kind of always happened. Um, we can't price compete with them, that's not going to happen, we understand that, um, but at least we can be. Pretty close to those counties that are similar to us.
What we've also found in some of these areas is it's it's more difficult to recruit. Um, there are, there are folks who who like working in the county environment. We have a large number of employees whose spouse works at the company or someplace else, and so this works well for them. Um. We've talked before, the the soft benefits, things like being able to see your kids' games, you know, those kind of things mean something to people. Um, but we can't, we can't be so far out of touch that it's, it's just impossible to do. Um. But but when Austin and I talked about this last night, this is one of those areas where, uh, and I'm going to go back to Chairman Lunt's. You know, question, we go through it all the time, sustainability. Is this sustainable? And and it's. You know, I I answered quite confidently a month or so ago that, yes, I think we can do this, I I'm a little less confident now. That the challenge we run into is, is can we sustain the budget and can we sustain the organization? In other words, can we continue to to keep the people that we need, get the jobs done? Um. Would it be helpful to to, now, one of the things we've seen, for example, in detention, our turnover rate has gone down. As as we've raised the wages now, is that a temporary in response to the retention payments that the state funded? It will see over time, but that was a pretty high turnover, and it's still one of the more high turnover positions in our, in our county, uh, family. It has stabilized somewhat. Um. But but the sustainability is is a two-edged sword, there's the financial stability and sustainability and the organizational sustainability. Um. You know, we we often. Talk about things that can keep you up at night, um. Things like replacing an engineer, that kept me up at night for six months, it took us that long to to make that that transition. Um. And then in that time, we made some pretty big decisions, we we dug a great big huge hole in the ground, landfill. Um, which we discovered after we came on board, we probably did it sort of the cowboy way and and we should have been more circumspect than the way we did it. We asked for forgiveness because we didn't ask for permission. Um, but those are things that 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 do do concern me, how do we maintain stability? Looking at the twenty twenty-four election, um. You know, these are things that that I I want the board to consider, we're not asking for decisions today, but but we'd ask you to consider.
But the, but the adverse is that you're going to impact. Retention and recruitment, right, because. One, retaining those individuals. That some might be in this room, but I mean, retaining those that are very, very important, so that they don't.
Yes.
Get headhunted by somebody else.
Don't get pulled off somewhere else, yes.
And and the recruitment for those that we're going to have to. Replace. You know, for retirement or whatever.
And and you know, I I appreciate what Derek's saying about, you know, the engineer, you know. Coming into filling that slot was brutally hard, I mean, that was tough and that took. A long process and I was plain feeling engineer and that's not my place, right? Um, so I, so it's, so there is a lot to that, right, and and even, you know, and I appreciate Dave for, you know, kind of letting us know that retirement's on the horizon, but even. Starting to to pick at that, it's just, there's not a lot of. Choice candidates out there, right, there's a lot of people we can maybe get there, um, but but there's time associated with that. Um, and and are they the, you know, are they going to ever be a Dave? I I don't. That's a tough one, right? I mean, there's somebody that's going to probably do what Dave does in the same way, but somebody that can form similar levels is going to be hard to find.
Well, we were looking for an engineer, one of our better candidates was a fellow. Who, for whom English was a second language, he was living in Canada and did not have a right to work in the United States at the time. And we actually looked at him seriously. Because that was one of our better candidates. Um, it was, it was a challenge in that regard. So, um.
You know, looking at this though, and sustainability and, you know, I guess. Part of that reason is because I come from the private sector, I I know. And. It it's tough when you. If you enjoy laying off people, I don't think you ought to be in leadership. Position, because it it's tough, you're affecting families. And I want to treat the employees. The best we can, but I also want to take care of the company, because I I think that's. And. And, uh. I. We still have a pension. You show me anybody else that does. We still have great medical benefits. Yeah, but they're getting fewer and fewer. The 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 big, you know, Freeport no longer has the pension program. I mean, that's a, that's a big benefit, I I I I think sometimes we undersell that. And and like I say, I want to treat my employees the best I can, but I also want to take care of business and sustainability, guys. It it's important to me and because I, it's tough when you go there and you you've got yourself up here. And all of a sudden, our downturn, and you have to say, you know, Dave, we really appreciate you, but we can't. We just can't afford you anymore, and 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 that hurts too. Talk about. Cutting morale of a of a of a family, and we are a family here, that's that's tough, so. I just. Back of the envelope. We're looking between two hundred fifty and three hundred thousand dollars and that perpetual, I and and that's not counting E R Es. And 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 we have great benefits, it's probably thirty, thirty-five percent added to that. And so. Now we're looking, we're looking at. Four to four fifty, and that's year after year after year, plus, you know, uh. Price of gas is not going to go down. And the price of food. It's it's not going to go back down to to the, so I. We've got a lot to think about and. And, uh, but I appreciate this analysis, we. We need those analysis because we've got some tough decisions to make. And I'm confident that. That we'll make the best decision for not only our employees, but also for the company. I. I'll get off my soapbox.
I basically just a couple of things to to throw in the back of your minds, um, and that is, and and we've done this actually. Not infrequently, and that is, you know, we'll, we'll do a raise, but we delay it till September. Uh, so so the the five percent comes, it just comes one quarter into the year, that represents roughly a twenty-five percent savings on that raise package. Chairman is absolutely correct, the next fiscal year, that's part of the permanent base. Um. But but like I say, a lot of the counties, um. Several counties followed the the same model we did last year and sort of inverted the the, um, the the paradigm. But this year, many of them are doing some version of either full or partial delay of onset of. Of, uh, wages. They're up against it too, they're trying to hang on to people, find people, um. And and still stay within their budget constraints, three counties are currently right now considering expense limitation. Elections in twenty twenty-four, which is a tough time to do it. Um, others, Mojave County, he described, their their manager said. Our expense limit is so high, we can't even see it. But we can't hire anybody. And so theirs is likewise a revenue problem, theirs is, they they've got revenue sources, but they have a very fiscal conservative board. And so they're finding that that they can't fill their their. He said between ten to fifteen percent vacancy all the time, and it's up on a higher scale. And so, um. But as we, as we kick around those things, we will tighten up the numbers over the next week, uh, on the entire budget, give you a better idea of both sides of the sustainability. Um, but so. Um. But but thank you for for letting us go through that, it it was a tough discussion. About nine o'clock, nine thirty last night, when Austin and I sat down and said. Wow, yeah, this is, it it's important and yet it pinches. And it's happened, um.
And yet we need to have it.
Yep.
It's reality.
It is.
Unfortunately, and.
Your your comment was very interesting, because because on the one hand, yes, um, some costs are right, and fuel's not going down, that affects the entity, it affects the individuals. We don't buy a lot of food. Where our employees do.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I was excited, the eggs are down to like three fifty a a dozen, and you're excited when they're under four bucks a dozen, right? Um. But those things, those things affect. Our our homes or their organization.
And our. Energy is not going down, but. Our employees are raising families and. Gee, man, Chris, I need to be raising. Kids right now.
Use your own lunch.
Oh, when you kick them out.
That all, hit them for dinner. Nothing.
Oh, I think he's coming open the refrigerator.
Yeah, 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 I know that.
Well, I think this was, it it was, it was good, good exercise to have, it obviously points out that we need to do something, do we need to do that? Maybe not, but we need to do something, because if not. Of all things you mentioned, of the costs increasing on fuel, food, everything across the board, our employees are making less, right, our employees are. Are bringing home less this year than, you know, than than last.
And and that's why those numbers stabilizing.
Yeah.
Our buying power's a lot less, I mean, that's working to the. Are buying powers a lot less. I mean, that's working to them too and that's that's the dilemma.
So I think that's the exercise that we need to do something. Doing nothing is is not an option yet.
And and retention is important. Well, the cost of training someone, I mean, even a in my business.
We're trying to replace somebody because they choose to leave, you know?
Cost me about ten grand every time I change it. And I don't have the the level of employees again. So I don't know, but but thank you for that. I, you know, and I like to say, I just. I got those numbers and I go, whoa, and you know. They shared sales tax going down. I don't and they keep, of course, we don't get a lot of the corporate. But but what 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 the present day legislator is doing, they're shifting. Their their corporate taxes are going down and corporate's doing real well and I I love it, but someplace that that. And so they they force the counties to raise the property tax to fill up the gap. And I I I hope people realize that's going on. And the dilemma it puts puts all all of us in. But thank you, I.
Let me let me follow that news up with a couple other uh thoughts. We talked earlier in the the budget season about um. Possibly a records management person to help us uh digitize and manage our records. A lot of our offices are already taking care of that internally. They've they've got systems in place. Some of them are particular to what they do, like the recorder. They've been recording things forever. The 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 primary bottleneck is in the board's office. Much, not everything, but much of everything that goes on in every other office in the county. Works its way through at one point or another through the board's office, a lot of the financial stuff, some of the things. Um I visited bits about that and and frankly, we're not ready yet. Um we probably need some more I T infrastructure before that becomes a higher priority. So so that one, I I'm gonna move off. Uh we'd also talk about a grant uh writer, grant writer, grant administrator. I can try building that in, but but given some of the the realities we're talking about. I think we will look first and hardest to see if we can find somebody to do it on a contingency basis, you know. Uh sort of take part of what you kill and eat it. That will depend and and there's a couple of people I know that that can give me some information on that. That used to be a regular aspect of. Administrative costs were part of it. Um a lot of grants are no longer that way. But but I know some folks who live in that world who who can inform us about that space. The other two areas where we need to give this consideration, I've already mentioned one and that is. I don't see and tell you correctly if I'm wrong, but I don't see the D O C inmate labor situation changing anytime soon. Interestingly enough, part of that problem is the same one we're talking about. D O C is having a hard time. Keeping and and retaining a checker for the Duncan area. And so we've got folks working up here because they got a checker, you can check here and Clifton and so forth. But they don't have somebody go down to Duncan. So if we have four or five and Duncan schools used to have a few, they have for several years. And so if we want to move some projects along. We should consider one adding one or two employees to the facilities to to make up for that labor deficit. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Derek, on that, if if it's a checker, it's sort of like. What David did with with when they were trying to take the uh uh M V D out of out of us. If their problem with a checker, if if we added sweeten the pot. And that checker would go down there and allow us the savings to me if it cost us. Whatever it cost us and we and we got D O C. Personnel to help. That might, doing that might outweigh the the.
I own our own person. We've actually had that discussion. And and part of it is um. The folks who work for us tend to work, we get more out of them than than the D O C crew. However, what you're saying essentially, if we if we fund part of a position for D O C somehow help that. We gain four bodies as opposed to one. And and perhaps perhaps less money. We have not really talked to D O C whether or not that is a. I don't know how they would handle it on their side because they would be D O C's employee. But let me. But it's a discussion that we we need to have.
I guess what I'm suggesting is, did they have two checkers before or just one? They had two.
One north, one south, right?
Okay, so and they can't. My deal was is if that guy, they need to check three times, whatever. You know, okay, that's a completely different thing.
And they need to check them every day?
They they check them several times during their, what is it, six or seven hour shift that they're here? And so they they roam and and so if we've got somebody signed down in the basement and somebody assigned, you know, in the courtroom, whatever. They go and check their where they're supposed to be doing what they're supposed to be doing.
I don't know why it wouldn't work, but I uh but that's Richard.
Well, and it's.
And I'm sure they they have their reasons, I.
Yeah, I mean, they have their protocols they've developed. And 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 we have really very little control over that, although we can certainly ask the question whether or not. Now, I don't know whether they'd be upset if if the checker goes to Duncan, gets some sort of a premium for being here. Does that create, you know, problems in their organization? I don't know, but but those are questions we can ask.
For for D P S, it's your it it sure gets uh employees out in in areas and. Because of the extra added incentives.
Correct.
Anyway.
Um but 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 those are things we've now, one of the things that that we've talked about in public works in that in that's both sides, roads and facilities is. We need to be thinking about transition for some that may be a quicker horizon. Uh it may be longer than the other half of that, but we've got to be thinking about who's the next leader of this organization. How do we develop that person? So those are the things we've been thinking about as well. Another area, I I visited Judge Ford, um there's increasing pressure from A O C to have some kind of security. In the courthouse complex. Um we have been hesitant. We we've got a couple of problems. One is physical. We've got essentially three, four, five entrances to the to this main complex. Plus, we have a a a south annex with two entrances. Those are our main public interface uh facilities. So the what you see in, I I think we're the only county left that does not have a. Mental detector. That's actually the small part of part of the cost. You you can get one of those relatively cheap. It's a it's a one off cost. Um the challenge is is how do we funnel all of our visitors through one or maybe two doors? Or alternatively, how do we man them? That's an ongoing expense. When visiting with Judge Ford about this, he mentioned that that he says, right now we have next to nothing. And and depending on, you know, if something should happen and and they know in the court system, there there's some cases you can go out a week ahead and say, this one's gonna be tense. They tend to be domestic relations cases, sometimes more more family law cases. And and if something should go wrong, even a panic button or call the nine one one. Either click for the sheriff's department, depending where their personnel are, it's gonna be a a pretty long response. One of the things that he had suggested was perhaps um some security personnel. That would would roam the building here or and or down in Duncan. And and that's a a segue into the next thing I want to talk about and that is I'm looking for partners. Um I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of our costs we've talked about before, but. When I say partners, I'm looking for partners in throughout the criminal justice system because. Uh one of the things I'm gonna suggest is that we change the paradigm of how we manage uh inmate costs. And and how that could free up some resources to do some of the other things we need. It's gonna require our partnership. Um courts are gonna have to be more tolerant if you if you go that direction and be able to manage that in a way. That we could do stuff video, we can do stuff uh coordinated in a way.
Before you go there on 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 the partners, you say A O C uh is 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 putting a lot of pressure for more and more security. There again, are they willing to to help pony up the money? I mean, that's a non funded mandate is the way I see it.
And the answer is no. They they for a variety of reasons, and I've talked about this, not just to Judge Ford, but Judge Stoffer before and and others in that system. The courts over the last five to ten years um have become an easy whipping boy, if you will. Liberal activist judges is a is a word that's often thrown around. It wasn't helped by some of the approach that that the courts took. There was a a former chief justice of our state spring court. That believed he he could negotiate. He said, well, we will let you have seven justices on the spring court. If you give us this package and legislation, we don't have to ask you for permission. They they increased the court to seven and didn't give them a dime of their package. There's some real efforts on on A O C side as well as the probation community, try and heal some of that that um rift. Um but the short answer is no, the courts didn't really get much out of this budget. And um. They are working hard, I think, to change the relationship. Um if that, they've reached out to C S A to partner with the C S A on some initiatives and we worked with them on. On some probation cost shifts and stuff. Um but I would not anticipate A O C kicking in money. I I just, I don't see it happening. They should, but it's unlikely.
And with that, Derek, I I think this would be a good time to take a break. It would be good for you. Let's take a ten minute break and be back here at nine fifty one. Thank you. We'll go ahead and call this the board supervisors meeting uh back to order and thank you, Derek.
You were. Yes, thank you. I I I want to cover two things I forgot. One is um the board has given direction to go to the higher reimbursement travel rate. Um in addition to fuel costs going up, if if that incentivizes people to take their own cars more often, that can be a budget buster as well. It it's it's small in the individual office from here to there. But in the aggregate, that's about a thirty three percent, about a thirty percent rise in the cost of of mileage reimbursement. We're also gonna have to be cognizant of hotel stays. There seems to be less and less of an off season in the Phoenix metro. They're expensive all year round. Some hotels will work work with government employees. They have government rates. But but even when when it gets down around that hundred dollar range in the in the middle of the summer, you still find all kinds of places. It's becoming less so now. So we'll we'll be aware of that. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, and that's this um this number here. That's our cash position of that. Of all of the numbers on this thing right now, that is right now the most. We won't know what that number is going to be until we do some projections. We've got two uh payroll this week, and then we've got two more payrolls in June. Uh those are running, what? Four hundred thousand dollars. So we also go through and find out what was underspent in some budgets, and and so that would give us a cash carry for. We've carried a fairly high cash balance the last two budgets. Uh last year in particular, it was a little north of eleven million. But that number will will fluctuate quite a bit. So on on later iterations of this this official budget forms, you'll see the cash position change probably quite dramatically, and it sometimes will go up, and it may go back down, but it will settle in on a on a final figure.
So so is that number a a projection or is that as of when?
That that at the moment is our best guess of what cash.
So that's the action.
It's projection. Yes, and and like I said, that's one of the last things that we do. Um so we try to get our best payroll is fairly, it's fairly predictable on of what it would cost us to get to the end of the year. Other things, Renee and I talked two years, I think it was, about making transfers earlier in the year. We used to wait till like the last couple of weeks of the year to get that done. Those have all taken place. Uh so that will, that will help us figure out that cash position. Um but there are some other things that we won't know um until we get right to the end of fiscal year. So right about time we we are ready to adopt. The the sheriff presented his budget um at, I think, the last meeting. As soon as I said, I'll get it wrong. Um and frankly, we're we're not that far off. There, I I'm going to point out the areas where there's some discrepancy, but I think we're working on a lot of this. This green line through here, which looks really black on the screen, you can hardly see anything. This was uh the sheriff's wanting to to move the dispatchers up to to the same detention rate. We've built that into the budget. Um again, that's gonna be something that that will weigh in the balance uh from Austin's discussion. Um but but we've built that in. The the blue lines here are the sheriff's projections. The yellows are the ones that that I've come up with, but we're not that far off. I I will be candid, I will not be recommending that that we uh you know, budget for an IT director and and HR payroll finance person. Those are functions that are already already provided by the county. I I certainly understand the sheriff's you know, desire to have more resources in those areas, but it it doesn't make a lot of financial sense to fund those kinds of positions. This red line here, which I don't know if anybody can see that very well or not. Um we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for overtime. This covers both detention and patrol. And that was trying to get ahead of and project. What it would cost us is we went from a a twelve hour shift to a ten hour shift. Um right now, we're over budget uh with two months left in the in the year. We're at two hundred and four thousand of overtime. That is somewhat a reflection of vacancies. When you have fewer people, you've got to call people out to cover things. Uh detention in particular, you you can't, you can't leave the jail unattended. And so if you've got, um if you're down a detention officer or two, you're gonna have to bring somebody in and they'll work some overtime. The sheriff has penciled in two hundred thousand. I think that's still a good number to look at. We are not as, we are, and and my hope is, is that the higher wages we're paying will cut down on the turnover so that we have some stability in that area. But but that's that's the area where um we've looked at there. Now, there's there's three areas or there's there's two primaries where there's some grant money that the sheriff has elected not to apply for this year. One is w- one area is it's called SCAP. It's it's to help reimburse jail costs for um immigration. People we pick up, we don't pick up that many. It's a it's a reimbursement, it's a backend thing. And so he's not gonna apply for that. Uh and then the other two are, it's called a get or not getting grant, the drug gain and violence grant. It's from Arizona Commission, ACJC. I used to know it forever. Arizona Commission for Justice, something, ACJC. But um that one was to focus on on drug crimes, gang crimes, violent crimes. And so it was an overtime program, at least part of it was. And the other was the Governor's Office of Highway Safety DUI Abatement. It was money specifically for for DUI Task Force and so forth. We haven't used those real heavily last year, and so the sheriff has elected this year not to to apply for those grants. That may put some upward pressure on our overtime budget in the general fund. The total on both those, I think, was under fifty thousand dollars. But but like I said, that may put more pressure on our overtime budget. Uh but he and I both felt like two hundred thousand should be a good good peg for that number. The last area, and we began this discussion yesterday, I, these numbers, the one hundred and five hundred thousand are are really pie in the sky. This is the shift of the IT routine purchases. Some of the tough books in the officers' patrol cars, it's time to start rotating them out. Um we we purchased them all at one time, so that that's put us on kind of a you know, ideally, we would do a third and a third and a third or one one fifth or whatever. And so we're not gonna be able to do that quite that smoothly. We just did that last year with pole books. Bianca and I sit down and said, you know, rather than buying eight or 10 all at once, let's buy three or four. And and we'll we'll do that every off year. So we're constant on a rotation there. But those numbers, the one hundred versus the five hundred thousand, will be a discussion between bits, uh the sheriff and and to some degree, us. One of the discussions we had yesterday was there are some decisions that are technical decisions, like what kind of a computer do you need to do this or that function? And others are business decisions. Do we buy all the computers at once? Do we buy a third? Those kind of decisions. And so developing this aspect of the budget would be a a joint partnership between bits administration office and and the sheriff's office. But but um I realized six hundred thousand dollars and about five hundred thousand dollars is is quite a gap. But a lot of that is is right here in in the IT differences um right there. So we will work through that. Where I'm looking for partners is, and and let me pull up another document here. So we've had a discussion going on for several years now about the jail. There's no question it's age. The sheriff at our last jail committee took us down and walked us through the jail, and there's 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 no question, it's a forty plus year old building. Um and you can see signs of of age and wear throughout. Um the other thing that's going on, and and we haven't, we haven't cracked this nut yet, because again, we need partners in in the town of Clifton. That is the, it's been called the the PSAP, which is Public Safety. I don't know this acronym either, but it's a dispatch center. And the state is saying, basically, you guys in Green County, Clifton and Green County don't have enough numbers to justify separate dispatch centers that we're going to fund. So we need to consolidate. That's gonna be, take the better part of a year to do. Um in that discussion, the sheriff says, you know, the building that the dispatch is in was originally designed as a dispatch center. Right now, it's multi-use. It's it's dispatch center, it's offices for the um, you know, the the administration of the sheriff's office, not the jail, but the sheriff's office, as well as a squad room, training room, multipurpose room. So in trying to to figure out, is there a way we can come up with funding for security at the courts, possibly office space if if dispatch takes up more of that building? Um one of the areas we could look at is going to another wave of housing inmates. Let me pull up a document. I've done some analysis on on our daily inmate cost. And and the reason I chose the daily inmate is is that's essentially, so you remember last December, it was last December, we had some some detention officers who had annually they were gonna lose because they hadn't been able to take it because they were understaffed. And so for a brief period of time, we took our inmate population, put them in Grand County, and we were charged a current inmate per day price for that. I talked with my counterpart in Grand County. They have an ongoing contract, I believe it's the US Marshal's Office. It's a five-year contract, and it's basically seventy five dollars per inmate per day. Keala County is sending folks over Grand County at seventy five dollars per inmate per day. So that becomes sort of the pay. What I looked at was essentially, what's it costing us? And I'm gonna see if I can blow this up a bit. What's, this is our, this is our cost for the jail. This is personnel, this is maintenance. This is, uh I don't believe it includes insurance. Um but essentially, I took all those costs that are that are attributable to the jail and said, if we have one inmate in the jail on any given day, the cost per inmate per day is is four thousand dollars. Because you can't, you can't you can't, like I said, you can't leave the jail unattended and say, you know what, we only got one guy. You, it's not Otis from from Mayberry. Um it said, please lock yourself in and let yourself out and so forth. And so you've got to keep all the infrastructure there. You got to have the people, you got to have the the lights working, the whole nine yards. So if we're at one inmate per day, we're about four thousand dollars. Um you get up to five inmates per day, that cost goes to eight hundred and thirteen dollars. And then if you get up to, so at one point, we were, I say we, the entire state was a very much tough on crime. For most of my prosecution career, it's tough on crime, put people in jail, put people in prison. Interestingly, that tide began to turn with fiscal fiscal conservative Republicans who said our incarceration costs are through the roof. And so they actually began the the discussion. They were followed then by those who don't believe in incarceration. And so a lot of pressures in the system are now working against high incarceration rates. Um it's not uncommon for our our JP's to let's, they they'll do the initial appearance, you know, the the person was involved in a bar fight, and they sober up the next morning and and the JP's let them go, and and it works most of the time. We don't, we don't have ongoing problems. So there's a lot of systemic uh pressures to keep jail populations low. I don't know that we're gonna get back to twenty to thirty inmates as a regular inmate population. But that's about the point where it starts to break even. Now, I'm also not unaware that seventy five dollars a day is not our entire cost. We'll have transportation costs. You've got to have people who transport people. But I think out of roughly one point four million dollars, and that that's not all of the cost. But but the ones that are easy to find, out of roughly one point four million dollars, I think we could save close to a million dollars on our incarceration costs. Again, that can't be done by any single one entity. It's gonna have to be a partnership, and so I'm looking for partners. We're used to the convenience of of having people come up here for initial appearances and so forth. Although the pandemic forced us to use some technology, so those can be done from almost anywhere. Um I know Grand County's facility has a room specifically for court appearances. So there is ongoing costs. As I've talked to to Mr. Welker in Grand County, said, you know, this if if this is something that that all of our in-county partners can agree on, um this isn't something like just to handle overflow. This would, this would be a new way to do this. It's not something you just flip the switch and just do. There needs to be some planning. There needs to be a a realistic look at what the personnel costs. The personnel requirements would be, you got to have, because people get arrested all hours of the day. There there are hours when the, when arrests tend to be higher, but it could happen at eight in the morning and eight at night, anywhere in between. Um so you got to plan for that. One of the ways that that we've talked about, and I I visited this without Judge Ford, is that if you took your your transportation staff, detention staff, and they're already weapons certified, if they became the people roaming the courthouse as part of your court security, you begin to solve two problems at once, because our incarceration rates have gone down. They were in the neighborhood of eight last year. Uh up through April of this year, we are at about four and a half inmates per day. Currently, for the month of May, we're at two point seven, but that number's climbing the last several days. So I I don't think that two point seven is really a realistic number. But I'd be surprised if our if our regular status quo is much more than ten or twelve. Um and so as you, as you roll up this scale at ten or twelve, that's that's for you know, between three and four hundred dollars per inmate per day as compared to a seventy five dollar plus transportation cost. And and I don't mean to make light of that. I'm not trying to minimize that. This is where the real work would take place, is to say, how do we dive into those numbers, come up with schedules that work? Um including uh on-call folks and and whatever else. But there's a, there's an opportunity to have some real savings. The other possibility is, we've looked, and and the numbers are old, but we've looked at remodeling the current jail facility we've got. It was not designed to be a modern jail. We we know that. Um modern jails have programming space where we can try to do some reentry, where you can do uh you know, some interactions with families in some ways that that it's difficult for us to do it. I I was reminded, I'd been in there as a defense attorney years ago, and I'd been in there as prosecutor. But as we might, it's it's tough. Sometimes you got to bring inmates all the way around at a sudden and just get to a visitation booth. It could be remodeled at a much lower cost into It could be remodeled at a much lower cost into office space. So if dispatch needed to expand, perhaps administrative offices and so forth could go back into jail facility. Not as a jail, as an office facility. There would be room perhaps for a a J P court down there. There's there's some things, and again, these are just ideas that would require partners um, to sort them out. Um, one of the things that I, I believe is unrealistic at this point is is really considering a new jail. Uh, two years ago, when we sat and talked about this, uh, Reeve contacted a person he knows who worked in this space in designing um uh, incarceration facilities. And they came up with a a number of about twelve and a half million dollars. That did not include a kitchen or a laundry or any administrative offices other than jail administration. So the the jail commander and so forth would be included in that building. But if you move the sheriff's office administration, that would be more. If you put in a J J P court, that would be more. But that was roughly twelve and a half million. If you increase that cost over two years um, with the cost of inflation. And 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 there's some stuff I read that said that that incarceration building has risen faster than the economy, but even if you use a a um, just C P I index. And and this would not be, this would not be sheriff's office budget. This is capital outlay. This, you know, boards build jails. And so this is essentially the cost, if you take the cost of building and financing a jail at roughly thirty, just a hair under fourteen million dollars. And actually, it'd be a little bit more than fourteen million because it costs money to initiate the bonds. But this is how much the the bill and the financing would cost for a roughly fourteen million dollar jail. So you'd have, if you had one made inmate in jail, you're, you know, twenty-nine hundred dollars. You get down to thirty inmates.
Derek, just so I'm understanding that right, that would be the interest you would be paying uh, on the capital cost for the jail for that inmate.
This would be both the construction, engineer, design, and interest costs.
Okay, so it's it's accumulated.
Yes, this is cumulative. I think, I think we're low on that. I I think if you build a building, um. And this was a thirty-bed facility, roughly fifty thousand square feet. We we've talked about two different sites, one out by the airport and one, you know, near the footprint where the jail currently is. Both have their their warts, both have their pluses. Um, a facility at three-way is is more centralized. Um, we got some water issues out there, um, whether or not we we could generate enough water to run a fire system and so forth. Um. Tony, what's our current gallons per minute out there at the facilities you've got? Okay, um, do we have enough to to support a jail with the well we've got? Okay. Water, of course, from our housing ventures is always an issue. And so, but 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 there are some, there's some distinct advantages being in the center of the county as well. Um. The 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 footprint near where we're at, where the old garage was, somewhere in that neighborhood. You've got a railroad, you've got utilities. There's some other problems there too. So neither are perfect sites, both offer advantages, both offer disadvantages. But if you take the cost of building a new jail and you add it to our current operating cost, in other words, this is what we budgeted for two thousand, you know, twenty-three fiscal year. If you combine those two costs for the next twenty years, one inmate a day would cost is just under seven thousand dollars. Um, and and that goes up, you know, if you had thirty inmates a day, you're looking at two hundred and thirty dollars per inmate per day. Um, again, you you have to get to that twenty, twenty-five, thirty before you start to hit break even with using the neighbor uh, facility. Their facility, I, when I last talked to Dustin, they've got about a hundred beds available. Um, they would almost not notice we're there. Um, there would be in increased marginal costs for meals, but everything else, um, they would not increase staff. Um, if if we were to take an approach that looked at this problem from a long-term perspective, you do things like seventy-five dollars a day. And then a two percent increase, a three percent increase over time. You maybe you have a a introductory period of two or three years and then you start to increase. Maybe you do it in tiers, you know, eighty dollars for the first five, seventy-five for the next five and, you know, and and there's, there's lots of ways to structure that. That would give them predictable income, give us predictable uh, expenses. Um, that would free up both some physical space as well as some budget capacity to meet some of these other needs. I'm not at all pretending that this is something that any one entity can just go out on their own and do. It's it's gonna be difficult. Um, but it's 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 a path that I think with partnerships. Um, it could be done. Um, you know, the the sheriff has often mentioned that the attempt to try and save money with fuel. And and in his budget, there's about a ten thousand dollar drop. He he feels like he can save ten thousand dollars. And I and I take him as word that he wants to save money. But ten thousand dollars in the five million dollar budget is is small. This is potentially huge. Um, and and I'm talking in in large numbers because there aren't. You don't know the details until you discuss the details, how that works. But I think there's potential. Um, you know, if you were to schedule, let's say, we purchased um ten beds at seventy-five dollars a day for a year. That would give us capacity of ten inmates every single day of the year. Just the seventy-five dollars, that's only two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. You'd add on transportation, you'd no doubt need some additional transportation vehicles you'd be using more often. Um, Cochise County has been running a lot of their inmates up to Canal County. Um, while they, you know, work through their jail problems, they got a uh, it started out, I I want to say is a it was, it was a big chunk of money from the legislature. By the time the legislature got through last year, it was down to like ten million dollars, which for a two hundred million dollar jail, it wasn't much. Um, obviously, our facility would be much smaller. Um, historically, we've, we've had brief periods of time when we've had thirty-five to forty inmates. Some of the double bunking that's in there now was was put in when we were taking inmates from Sapporo, when their jail was was on, you know, on the on the verge of federal court order. Some of those, those double bunkings need to be undone. They they don't work particularly well. Um, but that thirty-bed facility and 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 we've gone back and forth in jail committee about whether twenty, thirty, forty is the right number. Um, I know uh, Mr. Addaway pointed out that you really, as a regular day-to-day, you want to run your jail at about eighty percent capacity because that gives you the ability to to um, you classify inmates to where they belong, separate males from females, dangerous and non-dangerous. Um, and so that thirty bed, you know, forty bed is is right now, they got capacities, Mark, you know, is it forty-two? Our capacity to jail, I forty, that's that's what I thought as well. Um. It's the idea, like I say, I'm looking for partners. I'm looking for partners in the courts. I'm looking for partners in the sheriff's office. I'm looking for partners that can help develop this in a way where we could, we could really put a a sizable dent in our expenses and free up some some budget capacity to solve a couple of different problems we've got going. If if we were ready to go today. If if we were all standing out on some site with our gold painted shovels with hard hats on for the picture of the paper. We're probably two years away from opening a facility if we were ready to go today. As a practical matter, one of the big practical problems we've got is that we don't have the cash capacity to build a jail just with cash on hand. And our earlier discussion about revenues tells me we're not gonna be there for a little while. Um, maybe not ever, which means we've got a bond for it. And this is not a bond that you can just vote on yourself. You have to go to the voters to do it. I think it's a very difficult sell to go to the voters and say, we have single-digit, you know, utilization. Let's build a a fourteen million dollar facility. In reality, we're probably looking between fifteen and twenty by telling them to put a kitchen and laundry and and some other administrative o- offices on. I think that's gonna be a difficult sell.
As it should be.
As it should be.
Because if you scroll back to the top, if you're looking at, you say, an average of twenty-two, twenty-three, let's say, the average is eight? Or eight inmates, ish?
We're at five hundred dollars.
We're paying five hundred bucks for a day where we could be paying seventy-five.
Correct. And 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 again, I I want, it's seventy-five plus.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the hotel bill. It doesn't get us to the hotel.
Right, right.
But based on, so.
Go ahead, Derek.
Based on everything you've said too, Derek, uh, Graham County. Uh. In in more sense than one, are also looking for partners because they went out for bond and they overbuilt. And here we are, and they're looking for partners to get some folks in there because they have the capacity, overcapacity.
Costing them a million dollars.
Yeah, a million bucks.
That they're having to pull out of something. But let me, so so David, and I, this question goes to you. You you're on the on the jail committee. Have you seen these numbers?
No, Derek just came up with them.
I I sent an email out to jail committee last year.
Oh, just recent.
Yeah, I've seen it recently. I I would do this analysis and finish up, I think, last Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, and and on this, Eric, if 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 we go to housing our inmates elsewhere. Will that lower our insurance? Eh, or or is that?
I've asked that question and and frankly, no one's ever asked the question because everybody has a jail. Um, so the answer is I don't know. It wouldn't affect it for fiscal year twenty-four. But going forward, it it might. And at that price, Graham County may come back and say, hey, if we're taking on your liability, we need a little bit more. And and that would make some sense.
What? Oh, okay, I.
And I I don't know that. I'm just, you know, is if uh.
If if they agreed to seventy-five bucks a day, I mean, they've already signed on to the liability. My opinion, I'm not attorney and we don't need to get there, but I guess there might be even more savings. That that we're not even.
Behind the scenes, yeah.
Behind the scenes. And and yes, there're gonna be costs, but there might be savings too.
There there is. I mean, obviously, um road departments and police departments, sheriff's office, city police are the two biggest liability areas. And and it's not because they're overly dangerous, it's because they do overly dangerous work. And and jails are no exception. Um. There's a high intersection between people with mental illness and and people who do things that are against the law. So you end up with a a disproportionate representation of a community who are in jail, who also suffer from depression or schizophrenia or whatever. Um. Such a population tends to be more prone to suicide. That's an expensive proposition. Um, prisoner violence on each other um, with jail staff. Uh, liability that that comes, you know, someone acts up and detention officers have to subdue them. It's not uncommon to get a lawsuit saying you were too rough. You should have done this instead and did that. It's a constant that that they have to face all the time. So yes, there there is that potential for additional savings that would be secondary. They're not really soft, but they're secondary to the to the upfront costs.
But there's still a, a, there there is a possibility of a savings being realized.
There is. There is. And you're right, Grand County's, I mean, because right now, that's what they're charging Gila, that's what they're charging the U S Marshals Office. Dustin's had talks with with uh, tribes in the area to to house their prisoners. Uh. Just about every small county in the state built their jail on the promise of federal prisoners. Both from from tribal communities, but federal prisoners generally, and it worked for a few years. And then those those dried up. And so as a result, we got um, Santa Cruz, Apache. Uh, almost everybody is is beyond, they built, they overbuilt. La Paz County has a jail that is so expensive that they're considering simply mothballing it, shuttering it, and building a new one because it's so expensive to run. Um, that's La Paz County. They're talking about moving it to another location of the county and and simply building a new facility. We certainly don't want to make that mistake again. Um. One of the discussions that Bill Hardy has with me often, as I've kind of kicked down this deal with him, he says, why don't we do regional jails, just as a different model? Um, and right now, the statutes are built to have jails that are that are county-specific. Built by boards, run by sheriffs. Um, but that doesn't mean the model couldn't change. And and, you know, something like this may begin to to change. Interestingly, in Maricopa County, uh, Mesa and I believe Gilbert, one of the other southeast communities there, said, we don't want to partner with this sheriff anymore. So they don't do their incarcerations at the at the county jail. They do them at a private facility. And that's, that's where they do their their misdemeanor overnight and that kind of stuff.
But to feel part of Hardy's point, aren't, isn't that what we're doing now? If 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 uh, different counties are sending their their prisoners, aren't, isn't that regionalizing because they overbuilt, we're taking advantage of of a situation and and now maybe in the future, if this becomes overpopulated, then maybe the concept of of, but to me, we're already doing.
We're doing by contract rather than by structure.
And it's by, I mean, it's by design. We're gonna, we're gonna look at the bottom line and we're gonna do the best we can and and I don't know, I. So some figures are very enlightening. I, whoa.
They're they're kind of compelling.
I wanted to see that, see that that's that's one piece of the information that I've always wanted to see what that cost is to us.
And I do wanna, I wanna emphasize, this is, this is the starting point for a complex discussion. This, this is not easy stuff. This is not like the jail staff saying, we're gonna move prisoner A from cell one to cell two. Um, this, this becomes a paradigm shift in how we look at incarceration services. Um, but there are lots of services that we're trying to to figure out how to fund. And we we talked about the the sustainability. We talked in terms of organizational stability, financial stability, but also stability and sustainability for our employees. But we also have service sustainability. Um, we know, and we've, we, you, because you started this long before I was in this chair, made the the decision to say, we're gonna keep our roads on a five-year rotation roughly. Every five years, our road's gonna get chip sealed, they're gonna get crack sealed where we can, fog coated. And it has done wonderful. When I hear about my counterparts talking about their county roads, I just kind of close my mouth and say, we're in great shape. Because we've made the decision to keep that going. This becomes that kind of a paradigm shift where we say, we're gonna look at this whole problem as a service that we we have to provide. Um. How do we do this in a most sustainable way? So so my invitation is, I'm seeking partners, not just in the jail committee, it's well represented. Judge Ford agreed to sit on our jail committee. That's an important component. Because if there's one single group that controls jail population more than any others, it's judges. They're the ones who decide whether they stay overnight or don't. But they stay overnight, that's that's a sheriff's office decision. But whether they get out the next morning or whether they stay till their trial. So having Judge Ford on that committee is very, very helpful. But but I think this is a problem where partners can solve it. And we can do it uh, much more efficiently.
And it seems like those partners are a part of the jail committee. And so I would be curious if the jail committee met the, to see what they would suggest or recommend to us.
I I have sent it out. I've gotten only one, one feedback uh, to now. But but I'm I'm hoping that we get some other feedback and saying, let's work on this. Um. I haven't gotten that feedback yet, but but I'm looking forward to it. So.
You know, there's one comment I want to make is if if we chose to go that, down that path. Uh, we haven't really spoke about about the folks that work there. Of course, you know, that would, we wouldn't need all the folks that are there. What? What would be the plan? I mean, I'm not asking in detail, but what would be the plan?
So if if we look at historic turnover rates, attrition would address most of the problem. We we've had a difficult time keeping jail crews. And you're right, a lot of the savings comes from personnel. Um, so so we've had a difficult time historically keeping detention officers. I think it's too early to tell right now whether our wages is bringing some stability because we have seen some stability that we haven't seen. I mean, going back to the last two, three years, almost every meeting, we were approving one or two detention officers to be hired, which meant we were losing one or two detention officers almost all the time. That has stabilized somewhat. I think it's too early to tell whether it's wages, whether it was retention bonuses. But but there is a committee, um, the universities are studying, we've actually, the the state has enlisted ASU, U of A, and N A U to do some studies on how you recruit and retain um, police officers at all levels and detention staff. And and what does it take? What are young people looking for to get into this profession? What keeps them from getting, what keeps them from? And, and what does it take, what are young people looking for to get into this profession, what keeps them from getting, what keeps them from staying in? So there's some, some real dollars being put behind that question. But I think, I think attrition would take care of most, especially if the transition were not like a, a light switch, where you just say, starting this day, we're doing this. But it may not address all of the issues. I know Austin and I've talked about this and, and I, our, our belief is that attrition would address most of it.
And I, I believe that some of these costs would remain, I mean, you would still have transportation costs, and so that would probably be a detention officer that would do that transportation. So you'd have to have a couple of shifts of that.
Correct.
Um, also, you know, the security within the courthouse area, I mean, if that's something that was done, then you'd.
One of the areas we thought of, you had your transportation staff also being security around the courthouse. I mean, cause like I say, you're not, you're not doing all of it all the time, um, it would take some coordination, like I say, if court's going on in Duncan and they know they've got a hot case, then you make sure you've got somebody there. But, but if you got two people or three people on shift at a time, someone runs people down to Safford, somebody's at court in Goodwin or Dun. I'm not trying to make it sound overly simple, but your point is correct, is that, that we're going to need some people still, you, you can't do this without. But you would say the biggest chunk of the savings would come from, uh, lower personnel costs.
And you might have to have a holding facility or something, you know what I mean, like. You know, arrest somebody, they've got to sit somewhere until they can get transported or whatever.
Correct, and, and, and there are counties that are doing this, so there's, there's some, some lessons to be learned, like I say, Cochise County, I think, is making two runs a day. Um, uh, Hila County, I think, makes one or two runs a day, uh, over to Graham, so, so there are, there are folks that are doing it. That, that we can learn how they, they solve something, there's no reason to invent the wheel all by ourselves, again, we're going to be looking for partners who, who've kind of cracked this that somewhat.
And Derek, aren't, with, with, with the, with the juvenile detention and stuff, aren't a lot of those counties. I, I think Navajo and several of them are sending them to a centralized location in Pinal County, are they not?
We are too.
And, and, right, and so what lessons are, can we learn from that, I mean?
And, and frankly, that's one of the discussions we've had, there are some things we can do better in that arena too, but you're exactly correct. Pinal County, I think, is, is the juvenile facility for almost half the counties, not Pima, not Maricopa. Navajo has their own facility, and they, two years ago, were welcoming others, they're not now. So really, our only option is Pinal, same with Santa Cruz, Cochise, Graham, uh, Yuma, all of those counties are sending their folks to Pinal. Um, and that's a longer, longer distance and, and different considerations with juveniles as opposed to adults, but you're right, there are lessons to be learned from that model. So, so with, with the board's permission, I, I'd like to continue to try and pursue this, like I say, with, beginning with our jail committee and push forward on that. And, and like I say, we'll, we'll need to work across several, several offices and departments to try and see what we can come up with. I don't, I, we're going to continue to budget for the sheriff's office as though this won't happen, because it, it cannot happen by July one. Um, but it, it, you know, it could happen, and I think we can get there in a few months, and so, okay.
Yep, please proceed.
Okay. Almost done. The last issue I've got is, um, you asked me to identify potential sources for paying off our PSPRS debt. We budgeted two million dollars for capital improvements, um, we were, I was hesitant to greenlight projects out of that because. This year, FY twenty-three was the year we had a thirteen point five million dollar expenditure limit. That, this was the year that our population hit, and we couldn't, the election didn't cure this year's expansion limitation. We haven't spent anything out of our capital improvements budget, so we've got capacity there, we can do the budget transfer, we've done it in the last two years. And, and right now, the approximate amount, they only value it once a year, but our last valuation is one point nine million, we've got one point two five. Um, already budgeted to this purpose, and we can make that payment by the end of the year. If we wanted to bite off the rest of it, we could do a budget transfer from capital improvement, we've also in years past. Moved some money from the sheriff's office over there, and, and I'd want to look and see what our capacity is before I make a specific recommendation. But if we want to pay it off this year, we can do it, and one of the things that helped is that, that red eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Because that came by way of a donation and not as a sales, sales tax, that is expenditure limitation exempt funds. Derek, so was ARPA, by the way.
Yeah, and so was ARPA. And it goes back to. You always need to be improving on, on, on your capital, if you, if you let your house fall down because you're spending the money and, in, in, in good ways. Pretty soon. You, you got a shanny when, if you'd have taken care of it. And, and that's my only thought, I, 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 I hope that. A, and, and there's great savings in this, uh, uh, by doing this, I, I understand that, and it'll free up money, but. Let's don't get into the habit of forgetting about our facilities so we can do other things.
No, and, and that has been a key on my mind, if, if, if our revenues were continuing at the rate they were last year. Our expenditure limitation went from thirteen and a half million to twenty-seven million with the election from last year. That gives us tremendous capacity, we would have to spend like drunk sailors to, to, to spend that much money.
Sound like me. Lots of drink back, did you?
I, you know what? We'd have to get really good at spending to hit that expense limitation. But, but in the current fiscal year, at the time we set that budget, we knew we were thirteen and a half million. We did not know until, till September, re-October, that we would, we would hit reimbursement. I was planning on a, on a big hit, because I knew there was going to be one point two to one and a half million dollar hit, turned out to be about one point three. Um, so I knew some of those things, so yes, I, I put the brakes, I, I slowed the roll on any capital ideas, so we budgeted. But my thought was in current fiscal year, we would not spend it, but I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, we've got to be thinking forward and say. One, what do we need to build that we need, what do we need to maintain that we've got? Um, and put the money, resources into, to doing that, our roads are the easiest example, but they're not the only one. You know, if you let your building fall down, you've got to rebuild it, and, and that's more expensive than keeping it put together in the first place, so. Um, going forward, that will be less of a concern, but in the current fiscal year, we'd be hard pressed to spend that capital improvement fund between now and the end of fiscal year. So, but, but in terms of sources, that is a source we can, we can pay off the entire amount. Or at least what would leave the turnout, it changes because the market changes over a year, and they will evaluate it again at the end of June, and, and we'll get a report in. Late October, November about where we're at, but we could get awfully close to a hundred percent funded. If not slightly overfunded.
And, 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 and the savings, the, the money that'll free up in, in the years to come, I, I, I understand that, and why the state didn't do it, I, anyway. I get that, and, and it's probably, it, it is the prudent thing to do, in my opinion, and I'm not talking for these two gentlemen. Because, you know, those that, that understand the interest, earn it, those that don't pay it, and, uh. If we have the opportunity here to, to, to really lower our, our costs, and it'll be perpetual. And I, I think it's, it's, it's the right thing to do, but I, I just hope that. At least it would be my objective is to make sure that we, we're, we're taking care of, of the business here. Capital and, and whatever we need to maintain, we maintain, and, you know, we, we ask Tony to do those kind of things and. And, and that's why I asked about the ARPA money, you know, I mean. We need to get it going. And that's my opinion.
One of the, the advantages, I say advantages, that we have over legislature is that. You often, the three of you individually and collectively, talk about goals that are well beyond. Your, your working lifespan, and in some cases, your life's lifespan, we're talking about things, will it look good in twenty years? What will this be like for our citizen, and, and likely nobody around here will be sitting at the table in twenty years. But that's the kind of thinking that this board is always engaged in, to try and say, what do we do now that keeps this good or better? Ten, twenty years from now, our entire discussion about housing is, is a notion that if we can figure out a way to make it work. We will have invested in this community for our grandkids and our grandkids' grandkids. And so it, it tends to make better decisions, that, that interest rate. The, the state had an opportunity to save, I think it was like six hundred and fifty million dollars, like, you know. Three quarters of a million, billion dollars, and they opted not to. They had their reasons, they got the votes for the budget, and, and they maybe couldn't have done it otherwise. But we are, I think, the only county that's been able to pay down our PSPRS debt with cash. So we didn't go into debt to do it.
And some of those that bonded or.
Yeah, because they, they now have changed the interest rate, but they still have that debt out there. And in a couple of cases, it has affected their ability to do some other things.
And this would, and, and, and this would enhance our ability to do things in the future, I understand that.
Yes.
Well, I think you touched on, I think we've all touched on a little bit of the ARPA projects that we're talking about and how much we've spent, I mean. Yes, we can make for, you know, inmate personnel, whatever, you know, for assistance, but I think it's important to get those done. We need to farm that out, you know what I mean, to a contractor or something, then we need to do that. Even though we know that the cost will be a little bit higher, but if we don't get them done, then that money's just sitting out there and it could get swept. Uh, and plus, we're not improving those facilities as we, as we're, as we wanted to do with these funds.
There's, there's an interesting thing that happened, just talking about sweet, um, the state tried to do this last year, and that's, you guys got all this money in ARPA. So we're going to withhold some of our state, so it's, it's a, it's a backhanded sweep. They didn't do it, but that was the talk, and I, and I suspect, because everyone's predicting the next year's, um. Budget surplus will be significantly smaller than this year, and that the structural budget balance at the state is going to become precariously thin. Uh, over the next three to five years, so. They could say, look, you still got X number of dollars in the county, we're going to withhold that much of your shared sale tax, and all of a sudden, they've swiped it.
That happens on the school side, you, you have capital funding out there, if you don't spend it, then, oh, well, I guess you didn't need it, we'll take it back.
Yep.
And it happens.
So, I, I think, I think we've got our marching orders, we, we'll start getting some, some things built.
Yes.
Okay, um, with that, then I will, I will go ahead and prepare a, a proposal to pay off our PSPRS debt. Um, and, and we will also do, we'll tighten up our numbers on the budget side, give you a better idea of, of. Whether we can afford the, the personnel suggestions we've had. We will move forward to trying to form partnerships and, and work on the jail issue, it's not a, an overnight, but I think it's something that we could get done. And I think, uh.
The wage discussion is a big.
The wage discussion, yeah, and, and we will tighten up other aspects of our budgets, we'll have a better idea of what we can afford going forward. And it may be one of those where we do what we can and, and we put off what we can until we can.
Yes, two-year plan.
Okay, right, all right. Any other, other direction you'd like to give us as we, what we'll do next, next week is probably come back and report to you, we'll have tighter numbers up and down our budget. We'll, we'll, uh, hopefully be closer than five million on those two numbers that have balance, and, uh.
Yeah, you better be a lot tighter.
What's five million a month, buddy? Uh, but, but we should all, so have a better idea of our cash position, it won't be exact, but we'll, we'll have a better, better idea. And if it comes back more gloomy than today, then we'll change our discussion. But thank you, I know this has been a long session, we covered a lot of ground, but thank you for your indulgence.
Maybe on the next budget meeting, we, we can get those capital project list and re.
Reprioritize.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about the ARPA list, yeah, yeah, yes, okay.
And maybe make some notes on there, if, if, if it is, you know, I mean, back.
We will, some, some are done, are almost done, we can, we can mark those off and, and prioritize the remaining ones.
Get it done, yeah. Anyway, is there, you gentlemen have anything else? Uh, once again, speaking on behalf of the board, all those involved in the budget, thank you, I, you know, uh. We're, we're blessed to have diligent, uh, employees that take this serious and, and, uh. We, we thank the other elected officials and the department heads for, for their contributions, because it. It takes us all working together to get this thing and, and to get a sustainable budget, and, and I know. Sustainability is real important, I, I, I think to this board, and because we don't want to get ourselves in a bind that causes others. Uh, difficulties in the future, so with that.
Before you close, may I thank Austin and Renee, I, I, on purpose, over the last two years, been shifting more and more of this, this budget responsibility training. And they have really shouldered it, they've, they've handled some major components, and, and it has been exemplary, as I, I meant to mention that earlier, but thank you to them from me. For the work that's gone into this budget work, and there's a lot more work ahead, and I would be glad to shove more their direction, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and, and, Derek. Million-dollar managers surround themselves with two million-dollar people, and, and that's what you do.
Don't listen to that, guys.
Anyway, thank you, thank you all, and we'll call this meeting adjourned.